What's up everybody, I am Mary Negron from Mary Negron School of Nails. And tonight, we have a class on pedicuring, okay? Pedicuring, we are live on YouTube, we are live on TikTok, we are live on Facebook, we are live everywhere. So, I hope everybody that is in the live today is ready for this good information. Good morning, oh, excuse me, not good morning, good afternoon, good afternoon, good afternoon. So, I just want to um check myself real quick, and we are, we are live, okay? So, we're trying this new thing out, okay? We're going to be going live in the evenings on Thursdays from 5:30 to whenever we get done, okay? So, everybody in the chat is my co-host, and I invite you guys to ask me questions. Again, you can get more out of this if you are on um YouTube or Facebook. I can see your messages, I can read your chats, so um you guys feel free to join us over there, okay? So, let me make sure I got my comments up, yes, alright, so I can see everything here. Alright, so like I said, we are live on TikTok though, and you guys are also welcome to ask questions. But, I can't see them because I am focusing on the screen that's in front of me. So, if you have any questions, hopefully some of my moderators that are in the chat can answer them. Let's see, first, I want to say how amazing you are, thank you for every bit of knowledge you share. Thank you so much, Harles, I appreciate that. Hey Jessica, Jessica's in the building. Hey. Jessica is here, hey Jess- oh, Jessenia, sorry, not Jessica, I need to put my glasses on. What am I even thinking, I'm so sorry. Jessenia, how are you? Alright, so let's go ahead and get started, what we're talking about today, hello Michigan, hello Michigan. We're gonna be talking about dun dun dun. Pedicuring. Wrong screen, there we go, pedicuring. What's going on everybody in Michigan, okay? So, let's talk about it, hopefully I can get some of my students in here, even though I didn't even let them know I was going live. Maybe Shayla or somebody will drop it in, drop it in the group. Alright, so, uh, pedicuring. Uh, today, what we're gonna talk about, okay? Is first and foremost, we're gonna explain why you need to learn this particular subject, it's very important, okay? We're gonna talk about the equipment that you guys, uh, the equipment that you guys need to perform pedicuring services. Um, we're gonna list a different types of multi-use and single-use implements. And the materials that you use during pedicure services, okay? Because some of you guys are using some really strange things, very, very strange things, okay? And then we'll talk about some professional products, I have some here that I'm gonna show you guys. That you may want to start using, they're some of my favorites and um, you know. Again, pedicuring is, is, is probably one of my least favorite things to do. But I tell my students all the time, listen, if you want to make money, in the beginning of this, in this, this journey of yours. In the beginning, pedicures are gonna save your life, I mean, my instructor Shayla, she's working right now, probably at this very, very moment. Um, and what she's done most of today is probably pedicure, she, I went to visit her um earlier, so um, so yeah. Pedicures are going to uh save you in the, in the, in the beginning, okay? Now, we're also going to talk about some of the steps you need to take. Oh, some of the steps you need to take if you're going to establish a pedicuring business. There Shayla, Shayla said pedicures all day, yes baby, pedicures are where it's at. Alright, and then we're also gonna talk about the benefits of massage, alright? Hello, hello, everybody that's joining, um, and then we're going to talk about pedicures that you um do on more sensitive clients. Clients that have special needs, um, clients that are elderly, clients that maybe um wouldn't be able to get a traditional pedicure due to those disabilities, alright? And um, and then we're gonna talk about the most important part, which is um uh sanitation, 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 okay? So, y'all rocking with me, y'all here with me? Uh, I need y'all because I don't have any students in front of me, I need y'all to engage with me, talk to me. So that we can um, you know, have a good time while I'm sitting in here talking to myself. So, I don't, I feel, kind of feel a little weird because usually I got a bunch of students in front of me, but um we're trying something a little bit different, okay? We're trying something a little bit different, so. Here we go, let's move to the next slide here, so why do you need to learn about pedicures? Like, what is even the reason why you should learn this subject? Well, I tell my students that if I was going to a doctor, let's just say, a general practitioner. I would want them to be well-versed in everything, right? Of course, we have those doctors that are specialists, for example, um, you have doctors who are specifically um dealing with the feet. When they're called podiatrists, right? Um, but in our case, as nail technicians, unless you are an advanced nail technician, and we'll talk about that a little bit later in, in the show here. Um, but unless you're talking about advanced nail technician pedicuring, um, you're a nail technician, you should definitely, definitely be well-versed in all subjects, okay? All subjects, so, pedicuring is one of them, whether you like doing pedicures or not, you should know how to do them, okay? And if you don't like doing pedicures, I'm just gonna ask you, do you like money? Do you like money, honey? What's wrong with you? Alright, so what is a basic pedicure, okay? A basic pedicure, first of all, what is the definition? Because I like to talk to you guys in terms that are very, very much so uh state board related. Because at the end of the day, if you're taking your state board, these are the types of questions they're gonna ask. I'm not talking about what they call a basic pedicure in the nail salon. Or what your salon calls a basic pedicure, or where you used to work, what they call a basic pedicure, no, 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 not today. Today, we are going to talk state board talk, okay? So, with that being said, what is a basic pedicure, okay? A pedicure, first of all, the definition of a pedicure is a cosmetic service performed on the feet, okay? By a licensed nail technician or cosmetologist, okay? So, if you're not a licensed nail technician or cosmetologist, and you're charging for these pedicures, then don't get yourself in trouble. Miss Mary told you, okay, Miss Mary told you, alright? So, let's see here, let's look at someone in the chat, says feet holds all your weight and stress, so knowing how to prep is most important in sanitation. Yes, I agree, I agree totally, okay? So, a basic pedicure, a basic pedicure is simply going to be trimming, shaping, polishing the toenails, okay? Exfoliating the skin on the feet and the legs, and then performing a foot and leg massage, nothing else, okay? That's a basic pedicure, alright? Now, again, we're talking in state board terms, wherever you go and get your nails done, maybe sometimes they throw in a scrub. Or maybe, oh, excuse me, not a scrub, a mask or something in their basic pedicure. That's wonderful, but in far, as far as state board is concerned, a basic pedicure is simply those things. Treming, shaping, polishing the toenails, and exfoliating the skin on the feet and legs. And a simple foot and leg massage, okay? Now. Why is it important to learn this? Again, we talked about uh just a second ago, that the importance of understanding is, because you know, it is something that you should know as a licensed nail tech. But number one, who doesn't get a pedicure? If you're going to get your nails done, I guarantee you, you are more than likely getting a pedicure. Now, if you're going to one of these nail techs like, say like me, who doesn't really offer pedicures in my private suite. Um, which I do, but I don't really have the space for it. Um, but you, that client, you're leaving money on the table. Because this is a very desirable service, and everybody gets pedicures, alright? Even if you're one of those people that just goes once a year during pedicure season, which is, does not exist, okay? Pedicure season does not exist, um, pedicure season is all year round, alright? So, um, it's, it's a desirable service that everybody gets, okay? And so, there's, you, you need to also need to be uh well-versed in the different types of tools that you are supposed to be using, okay? Supposed to be using, that's a totally different word than what you guys are just using, or what you're seeing in the nail salons. And I have seen some real weird stuff go on in nail salons, y'all, okay? So, um, now, you also need to know how to perform these tasks accurately and safely, okay? Because doing pedicures, you can really hurt someone, especially if you are doing pedicures on people that you should not be doing them on, and we're gonna talk about that a little bit later in the show. Um, but there are people who should not be getting pedicures by you, or let's just say um you, that it's not trained in these specific types of pedicures. Good evening, everyone, welcome, come on in and engage with me tonight, I am here in my private studio, so I have no students in front of me. I need you guys to talk to me, talk to me, so I have someone to talk to, you are my co-host today, alright? So, moving right along, because this is a lot of information. So, let's talk about some of the equipment that you need in order to perform a pedicuring service, uh, service, hi, hi, hi. Um, what do you need to do it? Okay, well, first and foremost, you're gonna need a pedicure station, okay? When we say a pedicure station, it does not have to be a pedicure chair, like these ones that you see in my slide here, okay? Because these are very expensive, alright? These uh can be very costly in not just the actual machine itself, but also, you have to get plumbing and things of that nature. So, when I say a pedicuring station, I don't mean a pedicure throne or a pedicure plumbed pedicure chair, okay? We're talking about simply a very comfortable chair, okay? That has an armrest or a footrest for the client, and then an ergonomic chair for the nail professional. So, you're going to need something for you to be sitting on when you're sitting very, very low to the ground, okay? Because one of the reasons why I hated doing pedicures so much when I was uh working in the nail salons. Um, was becau- because I was sitting in uncomfortable chairs, y'all. And you do not want to be sitting bent over all day, hunched over, you know, we already got a big back, then you want to hump back too? Like, uh-uh, you want to sit in something that's comfortable, okay? And then you have to, you know, think about your area, the location of your area. Um, how, how large is your area, how mu- how big is your pedicuring station for you to work in? Where's the location of your water, okay? Do you have to go and fetch water versus uh having a station that has watered plums already, okay? Is it a low noise area in the salon, is there a lot of noise? I personally, let me tell you, one of my biggest pet peeves, one of my biggest pet peeves is when I'm going to get a relaxing pedicure. So, and, and uh so they, it's supposed to be, you know, a pedicure is supposed to be relaxing. But I go to get a relaxing pedicure and there's a screaming child in the background, or we're in a very large mall or something like that, you know? And it's just lots of noise, okay? So, you know, think about how you want your ambiance to be, okay? And then also, the cost in the equip- of the equipment and the installation of that equipment is something that you definitely need to um think about when you are putting together your pedicuring stations, okay? Now. Um, just think, keep this in mind, because being a pa- a nail tech that does pedicures, it can be, it, it can have some serious challenges to your health and well-being, okay? Because like I said, bending over and having this repetitive pain in your back and all these repetitive motions. You need to make sure that you have some really good ergonomics going on, okay? So, let's think about that word from when we, you know, we learned in high school, ergonomics, alright? Um, so that we're not um having a whole, having to deal with a whole lot of pain later on, especially later on in life. Or later on at night, when you have to go to bed, alright? So, pay attention to your body positioning is what I'm getting at, alright? So, moving right along, uh, your pedicle, pedicure stool and your footrest, alright? The stool that you sit on, and also the rest that your client's feet rest on. That is very, very important for that, for your, for the service provider as well as the um, the, for your posture. And also for the client, okay? So, for you to be able to do the service and maintain good posture and not have pain. So, that pedicuring stool is going to be low, alright? Now, you can, you can work, you have to work with what you got, to be honest, I mean, sometimes it's, you may, maybe you have a little office chair, which we have some at the school, but they get pretty low, okay? They get very low to the ground, alright? But getting a pedicure stool that goes very low to the ground is gonna be easier for the pedicures to work on the client's feet, okay? And some of these stools come, come with a footrest that's built in. And then some of them may have a separate footrest that you can buy um separately, alright? And your, your chair just, it has to be comfortable for um, for positioning, ergonomic positioning. Let me put my focus on, so no one calls me and disrupts my class, alright? So, um, any questions while I'm here? Let's, let's see, let's stop real quick and see what some people have to say, let's see. Phaedra says, Phaedra says, save this because I'm driving lol, but I want to start giving pedicures this year. Don't worry, it will be, this replay will be available on my YouTube. If you are on any of this other social media apps, Instagram, TikTok right now, watching us, um, you're missing out on YouTube. YouTube is gonna have all the slides and the pictures and things if you're taking notes. Because again, I am here for my students, and I am here for the nail technician that is about to take their state board, that's what I'm, that's what I do. So, join us over there, let's see. This is the one thing I seriously dread, first petty class, thanks, Miss Mary. You are welcome, your girl Jay, welcome, welcome to the class. Um, I see over here on TikTok, we have some questions, see, I love this, I definitely want to learn to do my own nails. That's nice, but make sure you get that license if you're gonna start working on people. Hey, wife snatcher, how are you? Texas, let me just say, Texas is a 600-hour state, Georgia is a 525-hour state, I teach 600 hours. So, I teach everything that you need to know, the same as Texas, there may be some different rules. There might be some different laws in Texas that um you have, but at the end of the day, it's, I teach from the Malady textbook. And everything that Malady teaches in Georgia, they teach in Texas, okay? So, it should not be very different. Um, at the end, but you, you, you definitely need to make sure that you are um keeping up to date with your state board rules and regulations for your state, okay? I'm a Georgia instructor, and um, and I can only really tell you what is legal here in Georgia. But pretty much across the board, everything that, that we teach is about the same, okay? Um, so if you have any questions and I don't answer them right away, y'all refer to, I've got some mods in my chat that are gonna be answering questions for you, okay? If they um, we got um SC Nail Tech, which is my friend Chris, and then we've got Ty in the house. Got a couple of other people that are very well-versed in what I, in the, the things that I teach and the answers to these questions. So, please feel free, okay, to, to listen to them, they will not tell you any lies, alright? So, let's talk about soaks, alright? So, there's different types of foot baths out there, now, I have one, oh lord, I didn't, I meant to empty this thing out. But um, because I got nothing but junk, and I brought this just to show you guys. But this is the, my favorite type of foot bath, okay? This is a footsie bath by um, let's see, who is, who makes this? Uh, footsie bath Beverly Hills, okay? I love this thing, it is portable, okay? It has a little, um, and I can't, I got a whole bunch of stuff in it, and I can't show you guys. But this one, I love it because it is portable, you can um take it anywhere you want, it has a retractable cord here. Um, so you don't have to have, and honestly, I hate, absolutely hate, pedicure throne chairs. They're too, they're bulky, they have to, you gotta find a place to put them, alright? Um, uh, this one has a temperature gauge on it that you can um keep the, it keep, now, I try to, let me, let me explain this. This is not a boil, a, a hot water, uh, this is not a stove or a boiler, okay? You put hot water in it, and it will keep the water hot, okay? I had a student, she called me, she was like, Miss Mary, I bought one of those things, and it won't, it just won't get the water hot. And I'm like, baby, it is not a stove, like, it is, this is the only little heating element in this thing, like, you, it's not going to heat the water. Besides, don't you put hot water in? Anyway, I don't know what she was thinking, but anyhow, get one of these, they come with liners that you can replace. Um, uh, enjoy, um, excuse me, buy a huge pack of them, throw the, throw it away after every client is so, 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 so much more sanitary, okay? Just take the liner, throw it away, get rid of it, alright? So, um, those are my favorite types of basins to, to, to have. But you can use a simple bu- bowl, like a big bowl, right? Exactly Vanessa, Vanessa said, it's not a crock pot, it is not a crock pot, okay? It's not going to heat up the water, it's just gonna keep the water hot, that's funny, it's not a crock pot. Um, but yeah, so, uh, with that being said, you can use just a large basin, okay? A large basin will work just as well, okay? Um, and honestly, if you're working in a small or sweet or somewhere that you do not have plumbing, this is the only way to go. So, keep that in mind, you can get a large stainless steel, ceramic or plastic basin, um, and you manually fill it with hot water, okay? And then it can be emptied clean, disinfected at, after each client service, alright? So, these portable, portable pedicuring units are amazing, I love them, okay? And there's so many different brands out there, I, those, some of these things I will tell you, go to Amazon and get them. Or if you know, if you can get them at your local beauty supply, I will say Cosmoprof has them, I've gotten, I got all of mine from Cosmoprof. Um, so, uh, if you're licensed, you can shop there, okay? Um, and they, they are ergonomically designed for nail technicians, okay? Um, and a lot of them, um, if you, it includes a place for your foot bath and a storage area for supplies, alright? So, make sure that you get the right inserts that fit inside of these things, because they make so many different um brands are out there, and there's off-brands and stuff like that. So, make sure you get the ones that fit your particular bowl, alright? Um, and make sure you use a new one for each client, okay? A new one, you have to have a new one. They also make rolling platforms, alright, that uh you can use these here. Uh, one of my favorite websites to purchase them from, if you're going to purchase a pedicure supplies is Buyrite. If you've never heard of Buyrite, it's B-U-Y-R-I-T-E. They're actually in Atlanta, Georgia, um, they ship everywhere though, they're hu- a huge company. Um, I really like them, that's where I bought uh most of my pedicure chairs, um, and I, you'll see as we go through the slides, what type of pedicure chairs I use, okay? Alright, so, uh, everybody with me here? Now, of course, you have your whirl, whirlpool, little, little whirlpool baths, which are your pedicure chairs, alright? Again, we showed a picture of those before, they are pretty expensive, they can get pretty pricey. I mean, the cheapest one I've ever seen, brand new, is like $1,500, and they can go all the way up to $20,000. Um, you know, what's your budget, okay? How nice are you, are you trying to make this pedicure, okay? Because if I buy a $20,000 pedicure chair, honey, those pedicures are not gonna be $45, alright? It's all about the ambiance, alright? Now, moving right along, so anybody have any questions so far? Let's see, let me read some of these chats over here in the chat, okay? Let's see, we have, um, let's see. Hello, about to graduate and start at a salon, that's awesome Charlene, congratulations, yay, congratulations. She's taking notes for sure, thank you, Miss Mary, my actual school only speaks Vietnamese, and you have helped me so much. I am in California, ha, 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 but still useful information. I, listen, I, everything that I teach, I promise you, it's across the board, going to be the same information that you're gonna need uh to, to, to do nails and pass your state board. Let's see, Vanessa Rodriguez says, Texas instructor, and it's about the same, oh, I guess you're talking about the, the um ed- the education here, okay? Awesome, and then Landon said, feet, feet stink, man. Okay, feet stink, alright, my, not mine, my feet don't stink, but uh, you know, if you have those problems, I get it, I get it. Vanessa says, it's not, it's not a crock pot, okay, alright? So, let's see, over here on TikTok, we got some self-taught here, self-taught here poo, ooh, ooh, Chris, Chris, we don't like that word, Chris. I'm a nail instructor, I can't, I can't, I can't condone that, that, that kind of stuff. But no, everybody's self-taught at some point, right? So, that's totally okay, welcome to the live, we're so happy to have you learning and, 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 you know, each one teach one, and you never stop learning. It, but you do gotta get that license, baby, you gotta get that license, and I'm here for you, okay? Alright, so let's talk about pedicure carts, so pedicure cart, pedicure supply carts, they come in so many different designs, right? To help to keep you organized, but at the end of the day, um, you don't have to really spend a whole lot of money on a pedicure cart like this. Like, this is super expensive, this is probably gonna be, you know, a couple hundred dollars for this particular pedicure cart that you see here on the screen, alright? Um, and, do you need that? No, it's nice, it's very nice, don't get it twisted, I would love to have like three or four of those in between my pedicure carts. But I'm, I'm, I'm very frugal when it comes to certain things, I like to spend my money on glitter and uh flights, okay? I don't like to send, spend it on pedicure carts, alright? So, if you get you just a rolling cart, and here's an example of one that I have, and uh maybe you can see it, let me see if I can pull this up. I'm in my studio here, um, but this is my nail cart, my cart, I try to keep it, I keep, y'all, I'm very organized, okay? Very, very, very organized, but this is my pedicure, not pedicure cart, this is not my pedic- my pedicure cart, pedicure stuff I keep down here, I brought it out so I can show you guys. But this just came from IKEA, I think this might have cost me $35, alright? And we got a bunch of them at the school, a ton of them, alright, ton of them. Um, I will answer all y'all's questions when I get to a stopping point, alright? So, get you a um something that you can keep your supplies on, the ones that you use a lot, the ones that you use, uh, that you, so you can just grab. You know, a- a- any moment that you need, your acetone, your alcohol, your lotions, things like that. Unless you are using um these, uh, petties in a box, these are great, love them. You wouldn't have to keep, you know, your lotion, your scrub and all that stuff in a separate area, these are so, so convenient, alright? But for your stuff that you use a lot, like I said, alcohol, cotton balls, wipes, um, your, your, just, this, your, um, excuse me, your multi-use and single, your single-use implements, things like that. You can definitely put that on your cart so that you can have them at your disposal, and that's so you can grab them as needed, okay? So, um, make sure that the surface of your pedicure supply cart is something that you can clean. Something that you can keep disinfected, okay? Because that is very important, you guys don't think about this, but every time, everything that you touch needs to be disinfected, okay? During, like, I just grabbed this pedicure cart and pulled it to me. That means that when I'm done with my client, and when I'm done with my service, I'm going to need to wipe that pedicure cart down, okay? So, make sure that you are buying carts and, and, and supplies and equipment and things and that nature, that can easily be cleaned and disinfected, alright? Make sure that if it does have drawers, that you keep those drawers clean, that you keep those implements that are inside of those drawers clean. You should have all of your implements, and let me say this, and I can't stress this enough, okay? Your implements, this is a state board rule, this is not a Miss Mary rule, this is not a Georgia rule, this is not a USA only rule, okay? This is, this, this is just a state board requirement, okay? You must keep all of your implements in a container that says that says, clean and disinfected, okay? These are my pedicuring supplies. You also have to have a um container, a container with a top on it, okay? That says, dirty, to be disinfected, so all of these inside of this container are dirty and they need to be disinfected. You cannot just have your implements just laying in a cart on the, in the drawers. This is a state board rule and a s- a state board fine, okay? So, keep that in mind, you guys, y'all, uh, this is, you know, again, I, I am a, an educator, I'm a teacher, I'm in a different type of lane, okay? I know a lot of people get mad at me sometimes, they're like, I don't want to use the nail tech police, and I'm like, yep, I absolutely am. I'm the nail tech police, because I have to teach you the right thing to do. And then when you go out there and you get your own license that you can risk and lose and waste all your time trying to get, just so that you can pay fines and things of that nature. Um, that's on you, alright? That's on you, I told you, that I, I gave you the keys, and you decided you just wanted to bust down the door, okay? That's up to you, alright? So, with that being said, um, make sure that your pedicure carts, you're not just, you know, keeping your dirty implements just sitting on the cart or inside of the drawers, okay? Alright, so, um, and having wheels on the cart is going to make it very easy for you to move it around, alright? Very, very, very easy to just roll it where you need it, instead of having something that you have to pick up and take, which that, that works too, okay? So, let me see some of these comments, because I see we're getting a lot, we're getting a lot of comments, let's see. Where can I find the workbook? If you're looking for the workbook for um Malate, for the If you're looking for the workbook for, um, Mal- for the Malady textbook, um, you can buy it on their website or you can buy it from me. Just inbox me. I will give you, um, the link so that you can purchase it, okay? Says, you helped me, um, a lot, uh, helped me learn things my cosmo sc- cosmo, the little cosmetology school didn't teach me. Yay, I love to hear that. But for me, it's hard because I have learning disabilities. Oh, man, I hate that. But you know what? We just gonna pu- keep pushing, keep pushing and get that license, okay? Dirty boxes are so clutch. Uh, yeah, you, you gotta have them. You gotta have them. Chris says, most states are also cracking down on sterilizer packs if you're not using autoclave, as they should. As they should, okay? They should be, alright? So, I feel so good knowing, knowing they're separated, as you should. You definitely need to make sure that they are separated. Ty Shell says, my OG. Ty Shell, is that my, is that my Ty Shell? My Ty Shell, my, from my student. I hope you're ready to do pedicures this week. Um, let's see, I stopped using sanding bands on the natural nail. Thank you, Miss Mary. Yay! Be destroying that nail plate. Keep those nails nice and healthy so we can, um, have, uh, keep our clients for as long as we can. Alright, so, moving right along, since we don't have any other questions or comments. Electric foot meets, the, foot, foot meets, huh, foot mitts, okay? These are a, a, a service upgrade. These are awesome if you are going to be doing paraffin wax on the feet. Um, in our manicuring chapter, we learned about paraffin. Um, paraffin wax, uh, isn't, is an add-on service, alright? And this is going to add a special touch to your specialty, uh, pedicures, okay? Okay, so, pedicures that include these mitts are usually going to be higher-end pedicures, alright? And one thing that I love about pedicures is everything is an upgrade. Everything is an upgrade and every time you add something on, the pedicure gets more and more expensive. And it doesn't, it doesn't take you any more time. Like, seriously, it takes you, it takes you no time, no effort to put some hot electric foot mitts on someone's foot while you're doing their, you know, manicure or whatever. You can add that on. Or while they're sitting there after everything's done. Like, it's, it really takes no time. Um, but after that foot massage, uh, the way it's used a lot is after a foot massage, using a conditioning lotion or a mask, um, that's applied to the feet, you wrap that up in plastic, which I, y'all, don't laugh at me, but this is what I use. Uh, you can get this at Sam's, alright? Can get this, this is so much easier, but get this, this is like packing, packing, um, what is it? Packing Saran Wrap, but you take this after you put your mask on a client and then you just wrap, you wrap this around their foot, it is like this, and, and, and then put the heat, the, um, electric foot mi- mitts on there and baby, it will just lock in that moisture, penetrate that into the foot and then, um, the client's feet will, you know, get conditioned, alright? The penetration happens a whole lot, whole lot better, okay? So, these mitts, they're gonna add comfort and warmth and relaxation to the service, which is what we are ultimately trying to do, I hope, with a pedicure, okay? So, let me pause real quick. If you're on the TikTok or if you're on any of the other, other, uh, social media apps that we're on right now, you're missing out if you're not on our YouTube, okay? YouTube, Mary Negrone School of Nails. Try to go over there so that you can see our, um, slides and the stu- and ask questions and, um, so I can see them. I have them right in front of me, alright? So, what is mask, y'all? My mask is going to be that concentrated treatment product that is used, that's made of like clay, mineral clays, moisturizing agents, some skin softeners. It may have some aromatherapy oils, botanical extracts and other, uh, beneficial ingredients that are gonna help cleanse, exfoliate, tighten, tone, hydrate and nourish the skin, okay? So, the next thing, again, like I said, paraffin wax is something that you can add to your, and that's an add-on service that you can add to your pedicures. And they are very relaxing. It feels really, really good. Um, there's several different ways to apply it. Make sure that you guys check in with us. With, on, uh, when we do our manicuring chapter, I teach you guys how to apply paraffin. And paraffin is, uh, applied to the foot the very exact same way, okay? Um, but be sure, if you're dealing with clients that are diabetic, that are, that have high blood pressure, low blood pressure, things of that nature, you need to make sure that you are not applying paraffin wax to their feet, okay? Because they may have lesions or abrasions. They could have impaired foot or leg circulation, um, loss of feeling in their feet and then you're putting, putting hot wax on there. You could burn them and then you, what you, last thing you want is somebody to lose a foot, okay? That's the last thing you wanna be responsible for is somebody losing a foot. So, be very, very careful with paraffin wax. Again, if you are not licensed and you do not have insurance and you are not, um, you're doing what you are supposed to do, I highly recommend that you leave that thing. Leave it alone. Don't leave that alone, okay? So, moving right along, if we don't have any questions about paraffin wax and the hot, um, hot mitts, let's talk about hot stones. Hot stones are really, really cool, y'all. Um, but a lot of you guys are using them improperly, okay? And you're going to burn your client if you, um, are not using them properly. Now, what did I do? There's my hot stones, okay? So, hot stones, first of all, they are, again, an upgrade and they are something that you just add on to the service. It takes you no extra time, costs you literally, what are these? I think they were five dollars a piece, okay? Buy a couple of these. Well, you'll want more than that if you can send more clients, but. And then these are the little ones that, um, I, uh, I, I bought these specifically for, you just put them in between the toes while you're polishing. Use them as toe separators. Baby, it feels so, 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 so good, okay? Now, let's talk about it though, because you don't wanna just buy any stones, alright? You wanna be sure that you are, um, buying the, the correct type of stones, which is going to be, uh, synthetic or, um, stones, not natural stones. But you gotta, you got, how do you heat these up, though? That's the question a lot of people have. Please, please do not put them in the microwave. Please do not put them in the microwave. You put these in the microwave and you're gonna be playing hot potato with them for thirty minutes, okay? They will get hot very, very fast. So, put them inside your towel warmer. What I like to do is take a towel, you wet the towels, you squeeze them out, then you put these, roll them up inside of the towel, okay? So that when, and, and have separate, different color towels for different services. For instance, you may have white towels for a regular pedicure, but maybe you have, uh, I don't know, black towels for your hot stone pedicures. So then take these and wrap these into the hot towels, put them in the towel warmer and let them warm that way, because the warm towels is not going to, the towel warmer is not gonna get so hot that you can't touch these things. Because you, as the nail tech, have to touch them and you use them as, during the massage, okay? So, you'll have them in your hand. So, if they're too hot for you to hold, what's the point, right? What is the point? So, you wanna test the warmth on your client first, okay? Make sure you check with the client before you do the first movement and you're sure that they are comfortable with that particular heat that you're putting on them, okay, okay? So, the reason why we don't use natural stones, the reason we use synthetic stones instead is because natural stones are porous and therefore, they cannot be disinfected, alright? They cannot be disinfected. And if you look at these, let me put these o- on my overhead here. Alright, so these are your natural, the, excuse me, synthetic stones and they're very smooth, okay? Um, and they're not porous, so they can be disinfected. And a- again, if they were natural stones, and when we talk about natural stones, you'll see people use like plumus stones, the ones with little holes in it and stuff like that, you cannot, you cannot use those on clients, alright? Please do not use those on clients. And here's some of the little, the little baby ones overhead. So, for the people that are on my YouTube, so you can see what they look like, alright? Cause we got quite a few people in here. That's so awesome, so awesome. Alright, so, um, now, uh, y- you can, you, you can check with the company that you purchased them from to make sure that they are synthetic, but you can pretty much look at them and tell, okay? If it looks like a rock, it's probably a rock, alright? And one of the main reasons that we don't want to use these natural stones is because they can hold what's known as MRSA, methicillin-resistant Staphylococcus aureus, okay? And that's something that is highly contagious, alright? Um, and can cause you to, um, you know, get sick, alright? So, let's see, cause we got some comments in here. I see some people wanna challenge me, alright? So, someone just called me a liar. Lies, natural stones can be disinfected. Okay, natural stones that you're going to he- heat up and put on someone's leg? First of all, don't, see, we gonna call this the Mary Negrone Derailment Show, alright? Um, first of all, I, I don't, don't call me a liar, alright? You, if you wanna call anybody a liar, talk to Malady, talk to the state board, okay? And talk to your mama. Don't talk to me. Definitely don't call me a liar on my own live or you get boo- booted out, okay? With that being said, do not, for the case of state board purposes, do not use natural stones on people's feet and legs. You can do whatever you want with your license nailed by KJ, nailed by KJ. You can do whatever you want with your foo-foo license, but over here, we're going to do things properly so that we don't contaminate our, uh, hurt our clients and so that we do not end up losing our license or possibly getting, uh, 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 losing our home and all of that stuff. So, um, talk to, to argue with your mama, okay? You not finna argue with me, alright? Thank you so much for your comment. Anyway, if I cared enough to block you, I would. How dare you call me a liar on my live? The devil is a lie. Alright, Phaedra said, should I use the same precautions as the paraffin wax? Like, if the client has any medical problems? Absolutely. Use the same precautions as far as, um, we, if, if a cli- well, if a client has medical problems, just make sure that they don't have a contraindication for using, um, the hot wax, okay? You wanna be very, very careful. Let's see, someone said, off the topic, but do you think that steam sterilizer is better than the heat-dry one? I feel that steam one is more expensive in the long term. Uh, Yamila, um, Yamilith, we'll talk about that, okay? We'll talk about that a little bit later, so stick around. Let's see, will you be performing a live pedicure? I will not, but I will be dropping a link in here where you guys can watch one that I did, okay? Tomorrow, we're going to be doing pedicures in the classroom. I will be there. So, um, I will do, we'll do a live, um, uh, pedicure tomorrow. It won't be tonight. Tonight is just theory, okay? The audacity, the audacity of someone to call me a liar on my live. How dare you? Uh, I, I see that she has gone away to the wayside, alright? Let's see, and then someone asked, let's see, Christine said, once you use those stones, how will we disinfect them after use? Is there a certain type of way to disinfect? Very good question, very, very good question. So, you would disinfect them the same way that you disinfect any other implement, okay? So, we're gonna clean it with soap and water and then we would dry that off and then we would in, uh, in- insert it into a container that's big enough to completely cover it, alright? Um, and that would be into some barbicides or cavicide, whatever type of, um, of state-approved disinfectant that you, uh, choose to use, alright? Um, and then leave it in there for the, uh, the amount of time that you would, uh, that the, it, the instructions tell you to leave it in for. Dry them off, rinse, uh, excuse me, rinse them off, dry them off, put them in, uh, a clean container that says disinfected, just like any other implement, okay? Yamilis said, thank you, I appreciate it. No, thank you, I appreciate you. Okay, moving right along, okay? Cause we not gonna be derailed today. Not today, Lord. Okay, let's talk about the different types of multi-use and single-use implements and materials used for pedicuring services. Hi, Peachy Mango, how are you? Alright, so, we should know at this stage in the game what a multi-use and a single-use implement is. Hopefully, you guys know what that is, alright? So, really quickly, just really quickly, alright? Single-use means you use it one time, you throw it away. Examples, cotton balls, Q-tips, these little pedicuring slippers, okay? These are single-use. These are not so multi-use, alright? I don't care what nobody tells you. Um, you need to throw those things away. Multi-use are things that are made of like stainless steel, maybe they're plastic, things that can be disinfected, um, sanitized and disinfected. And then, of course, if it's, um, uh, s- uh, stainless steel, it can be, uh, put in the sterilizer, okay? And we'll get to that in a minute. Buffers is a very good example. Yes, yes, very good example. Again, if I'm not answering your questions, there are people on this live that I trust very, 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 very much so to answer them for you, okay? Um, so, uh, if I don't get to your question. Alright, so, um, let, there are implements that we talked about in the manicuring chapter that are very, very similar to a pedicure, uh, that we use in pedicuring, but not always identical, okay? Now, before I move, someone said, when using the stones on the client, what do we do to help glide the stones on the skin? You're going to do, you're going to use the stones when you're in the massage phase of the pedicure. So, you're gonna have, hopefully, when you do massage, you're gonna have lotion or some type of massage oil or, um, cream of something of that nature to massage the client's legs with. So, you would just hold it in your hands and, um, massage it, so that you, so you have like a slip, slippy solution, okay? Now, first you're gonna need, some of the things you're gonna need are going to be nail clippers, okay? Nail clippers or toenail nippers. Now, there's a difference in the two, okay? So, if you look on my screen here, okay, this is going to be your, uh, your nail clippers, toenail clippers. I don't know what's on, that's some acrylic on there, alright? And because, obviously, these are, we've been using these for the wrong thing. They got glue on them. Where is, why is it got glue on it? Anyhow, if you notice, these, let me zoom in a bit. If you notice, these have a straight edge on them, okay? Straight. I don't know who told y'all or who taught y'all, but you should not be cutting toenails with a cur- to, with a curve in them, okay? You should not have a curve in your toenails, like, meaning your toenails should be cut straight across. They should not be rounded like a fingernail, alright? They should not. So, these are toenail clippers, alright? Not to be confused with fingernail clippers, because fingernail clippers, you can round them out, okay? It's not such a big problem, but the reason why we want to have straight edges on our toenail clippers, does anybody know? Can anybody tell me in the chat? Why we need to have straight-edged toenail clippers? Hello, Scott Walker, welcome to my live. Let's see, we are at the house of Mary's, at the school or Mary's house right now. We are at Mary's Home Studio, okay? In-grown, absolutely, that is the answer, in-grown, okay? Again, if you are on the live right now, you can get a much better view of what's going on if you are on our YouTube channel, Mary Negrone School of Nails. So, go on over there if you are watching. So, when you use a curved toenail clipper, you're going to be cutting it into like a U shape. You can end up with ingrown toenails. Your toenails need to be cut straight across, okay? And that is going to keep you from developing ingrown toenails, alright? Now, this is an example, okay? So, this is our toenail clipper. This is a toenail nipper. Looks very, very much like a cuticle nipper, okay? But it's much larger, the jaws are huge, okay? And they, um, again, are straight across. Oh, no, Bree says, I have an ingrown right now. That is horrible. That is so painful. I feel your pain, honey. I do, let me tell you, I don't play about my toenails, okay? Cause I do not want ingrown. So, if you notice, these, these jaws here, they are very, they're straight, okay? So, why would you want to use this toenail nipper versus a toenail clipper? Can anyone explain to me why I would want to, to use this instead? Okay, because we, we teach this in the, um, in the ANT course, why we use these, okay? So, um, a toenail clipper, it, the way the jaws are made, right? So, when you clamp down on this, notice that it just, it all cuts at one time. Clamp, clomp, that's it. One, all at one time. Whereas a nipper, you can start, if you have a- Whereas a nipper, you can start, if you have a client with very, very thick toenails, yes, Han, easier to kick, ki- cut thicker toenails. If you have a client that has thicker toenails, you can start at the corner and nip, 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 nip a little bit at a time, little bit at a time, little bit at a time, rather than trying to cut. If anybody has ever tried to cut an acrylic nail, just cut it. Right? It splits. Sometimes the acrylic nail will just split and it goes ping across the room. So you do not want that when you are working with thicker toenails, because Jesus, it's not a per- that's attached to the person's actual, you know, that's their real nail. If it splits down the middle, if it splits some weird way, that could be very, very, very painful. And we definitely don't want that to happen on our clients that, um, that are elderly, cuz there a lot of times thicker toenails, not to say that all elderly people have thick toenails, but a lot of times they are gonna have thicker toenails, okay? So that hinge in the jaw makes it easier for you to clip thicker toenails. Thank y'all so much for the gifts, I really appreciate it. So some of the comments that we have here, um, let's see, someone said easier to cut with, yes, easier to cut with. Uh, let's see, yes, that makes sense, so the nail doesn't split, that's right, um, uh, Mother Moon. Let's see, um, thank you so much. That can be very painful and cause trauma to the nail, says, uh, South Carolina Nail Tech, AKA my friend Chris. So, um, on the live, we have someone that says, um, in, uh, ingrown nails, yes, you are correct, Charlene. And Bree said, can ingrowns be genetic in some cases? Listen, everything can be genetic, if you ask me. Um, I mean, if you look at, sometimes you can literally look at, you know, your child's nails and say, and they look just like your nails. I mean, I think everything is genetic, but definitely, I believe so. Um, uh, Yamila said, to avoid, uh, ingrown toenails, yep, absolutely. Bree said, my toes are on the thicker side, and they would crack or split if I didn't use an actual toenail clipper or nipper for thicker toes, that, that, exactly. So, get you one of these nippers, toenail nippers, if you have thick toenails, y'all, so that way you can clip gradually, okay, gradually, so that you're not just cutting it all at one time, if that makes sense, hope that makes sense, okay? So, moving right along. Um, Harley Quintana said, so the nail doesn't embed, yep, ingrown toenails, absolutely. Alright, so, this is getting more into the more advanced type of tools, alright? So what is a curette and what is a nail rasp? You've probably seen these before but didn't know what they were for. Thank you so much Quincy. Alright, so a nail rasp, now, let's start with the curette. So the curette, if you've ever seen like a, a melon baller, you know, those things that they cut, they, they, they make perfect little circles in your, um, watermelon or, or, uh, honeydew or cantaloupe, when they're doing these little cute little, you know, uh, fruit baskets and stuff. You cut, and it turns, it makes it into a round little ball. Imagine that being on a very, very, very small end of an implement here. Okay, so I'm gonna put this on the screen here, so you guys can see the, um, curette, alright? So the curette, it has a little small melon baller type of look to it, alright? So I think I'm zoomed in as far as I can zoom on this particular, there we go, let me just get closer. So what you do here and the re- the way you use this, okay? This is, it, it's a small scoop-shaped end, alright? And it allows you to have a whole lot more efficiency when removing debris from underneath the toenails, and we're gonna say debris instead of toe jam. But yeah, this is how you get the toe jam out, okay? From under the nail folds, around the hyponicium area, even sometimes up around the eponicial area when un, um, close to the PNF, because, you know, people's toenails tend to be a little, well, a lot bigger than, uh, especially the big toe, um, or the skin around it is a lot more, there's usually more padding. Um, so you can kinda pull that skin back and then you'll have toe jam all around the nail, literally all around here. So, you can take this and go up underneath the nail and clean it out so much easier than, um, let's just say, a, uh, um, an orange wood stick or any other sharp implement, okay? So you gotta be careful when you're working on people, especially, uh, 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 people with, um, you know, that are, have medical problems and diabetics and things like that, cuz you will, listen, you guys are gonna come across people who, they're gonna say they're not diabetic, but they still got, they, but they are. Okay, you still, you just gotta be careful, and, and this, I always say, if you can have tools that will prevent you from cutting your client, why not use them? Use things that will keep you from cutting your client, okay? Using a cuticle pusher to dig underneath someone's toenails can be very painful. So a curette is very useful, alright, to help remove that debris. Um, and you wanna be very careful with it, alright, to prevent damage to the client's skin and, um, and also around the nail, alright? So never use curets with sharp edges, alright, so, cuz they can cut you. Now, a nail rasp, alright? The nail rasp is literally just a tiny little metal file, okay? Imagine a metal file, which I have, I have some here. I'll show you guys, so this is a, a metal file. I'm gonna put this on the screen. This is a metal file. Alright, and I love a metal file. I have several of them. I keep metal files in my kit at all times, clean and ready to go, alright? But a metal file is easy to use on someone who's got a nice free edge, like on my nails here. Easy for you to, to trim those nails down, okay? But when you're working with someone who has toenails that maybe they're really, really short, you may not be able to get, uh, after you clip the toenail, let's just say you, the, the client came in. Let's just say this is a toenail, right? Uh, I know this is my thumb, but let's just say it's a toenail, cuz it is pretty big. And we clipped this client's nail completely short, like, really short, below the tip of the finger, okay? Which is where you should be. I know you wanna argue with me, y'all know I don't play about that though, don't argue with me, argue with your mama. Um, uh, you should be cutting your toenails short where the toenail is not. We don't need free edges that extend past the padding of, of the tip of our toes, alright? That's where you're gonna end up hitting your toenail and, and, um, and popping the whole thing off. But you wanna cut the toenail fairly short, right? So when you cut the toenail short, and you say, you say I cut off all my free edge, I may not be able to get this metal file under there to file and shape the nail. And the, the edges here might be sharp. So how can I get under there? Well, you take this rasp here, and you're gonna go down into that corner area, down into the corner area and pull away, alright? And that's going to make these corners here not so sharp. Pull away, alright? So, that's how a nail rasp works. And if you were to see this done on someone who has really short, short toenails, it would make a whole lot more sense, okay? So, you, you never wanna, you, you guys, we do not work on ingrown toenails, stop, stop it, stop doing that. You are not licensed to do it, stop doing it. You are going to end up in court, okay? If you have a client that has an ingrown, you should not be working on them, okay? They need to go to a podiatrist, you, if there's any blood or any type of pus or anything that is coming out of that client's toe, or if there's pain, swelling, redness, heat, all of that stuff, it is considered, yes, Chris, it is considered a medical procedure, and you are now working out of your scope of practice. And I know this sounds very, very like, oh, she's the nail police. Well, let me tell you something, I'm gonna pull up that, that, um, I'm gonna pull up that, I, I saved it. I was watching YouTube the other day, and I like to watch the People's Court. And all of a sudden, I'm sitting here on, in my classroom, and an episode comes on where a lady was being sued because she was unlicensed. Now, this wasn't nails though, okay, so let's just, but the, you guys can just Google it. Google death by pedicure or pedicure lawsuit. You will see the, hundreds of them on the internet, okay? Um, but I was watching, uh, an episode of People's Court, and this lady was getting sued. She was doing dreadlocks, she was doing faux locks, she was an unlicensed cosmetologist. She had no business doing, um, these, doing people's hair without going to school. Because I know no one wants to go to school, nobody has time for it, but you'll have time for it when you're getting sued into somebody's courtroom. She was doing faux locks, and she was doing it on a Caucasian lady's hair, they had very fine hair. She's taking rubber bands, those little tiny rubber bands, and y'all know what I'm talking about, the ones that when you do beads and stuff on your kid's hair and the, the, the ones that you learn in the hair school not to put on people's natural hair for long, because it will break the hair. Well anyhow, she's taking the lady's hair, she's putting the rubber bands around the lady's hair to try to keep the dreads in, cuz her hair was too fine, and she didn't have no business getting drunk dreadlocks to begin with. But anyway, I digress. She's getting the dreadlocks, well then, two weeks later, the lady's hair done fell out completely, by the root. Because the rubber bands broke her hair off. And had she been a licensed cosmetologist, the only reason I'm not a licensed cosmetologist, I was a cosmetology school dropout. But anyhow, I did go through most of the course and finished everything, but then, my stayed bored. But anyway, I know better than to leave, I can't leave those things in my hair, okay? She broke the lady's hair out, and she was in court, Judge Millian, my favorite. Well, no, Judge Judy's my favorite. Judge Millian, the lady brought a letter from a licensed nail and, uh, excuse me, hair, hair cosmetologist, who, who is licensed to do this stuff. The lady who, whose hair fell out, she brought a notarized letter from an expert that said, they teach you in school not to do that, that never to leave those little rubber bands in people's hair. To, and, and it's one thing, because there is a way, when you're doing these dreads, you use it in initially, but you, once you get the hair in, you cut the, the, the rubber band out, because it cannot stay. So what ended up happening, a long story short, Judge Millian said, boom, pay the lady. Pain and suffering, she, her hair fell out, give her the money, she sued her for five thousand dollars, and she got it. Y'all, that was some hair that grew back. The lady had hair, her hair grew back by the time she went to court. Y'all better stop doing, you can't grow a leg back, you can't grow a foot back, you can't grow a toe back. Stop doing things that are medical procedures. You are taking a risk, and I am going to write a letter for Judge whoever and say that they knew better than to do that, and you're gonna lose everything you got. And I'm just gonna say, I'm sorry, they paid me five thousand dollars to write this letter. They said they was gonna pay me when they got their million dollar settlement, and I, you know, I had to tell the truth. Mary Negrone School of Nails, don't let this, don't let this, this is not, uh, this is not a game, this is a real thing, it's the real deal, okay? We teach what the, what you're supposed to be doing, not what you wanna do, okay? So please, y'all, please, for the love of all things that is holy, stop doing stuff that you are not licensed to do. And you cannot work on ingrown toenails. If a client retches back and says, ah, that hurts, leave him alone, send him to the doctor, you are not a doctor. Alright, so I'm off my soapbox now, let me answer some of these questions. So Charlene said, I find it hard to cut some nails with the clippers, is it okay to use nippers? Absolutely, that's what they're for, Charlene, that's what they're for. Jen said, say it again. I ain't got enough time on this live to say it again. But you, you know what I'm talking about. Alright, Lisette said, hello Mary, hey everyone, new subscriber. I'm so glad I found your channel, it has been so helpful as I attend school. Great information, great teacher. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. Alright, we got Jamie. Jamie said, if you get a thick toenail, can it be fixed? Uh, I don't think so. I think once you have, once your, um, uh, your nail starts to grow a certain way, I think it's because your, in matrix has been affected, and once the matrix is affected, it's, it's just the way it's gonna grow from here on out, okay? Alright, so let's move on to the next slide here, y'all. I don't wanna keep y'all too late tonight. Alright, thank y'all so much for your comments and engaging with me. Alright, so, um, the next thing, and this is another one, y'all gonna get mad at me, uh-oh. Uh-oh, y'all gonna get mad at me, but these pedicure files, alright? So, pedicure files, first of all, when we're talking about a foot file, we are not talking about this. Okay, this is not a foot file. This is a cheese grater, Parmesan cheese grater, cheddar cheese grater, Monterey Jack cheese grater, not a foot grater, okay? These, these, okay? These are illegal in every state in the United States, okay? Yes, I know they sell them in the nail supply, I know that, I, I understand. So what? They sell Coca-Cola, they sell, you know, they sell a lot, they sell candies, chocolate, all that stuff that I got in my cabinet in there, that's not good for you either, you should not be using this. Now, they're not elite, you know, candy and coke and all that is not illegal, but this is, okay? You will get a fine if you get caught with this in your salon, and there's a lot of salons that continue to use them, because they are lazy. There are other ways to remove calluses. This is the reason why you keep having to get your feet scrubbed every time you come to the nail salon, because this thing right here is causing a wound, okay? This implement is causing your calluses, okay? This is not a, now, let me take this back a little bit. They do use these in the, um, in the podiatrist's office, because they are medical professionals. This is a razor blade, okay? This right here will cut you. It will cause a wound, and every time you use it, you are causing the cl- the callus to grow back thicker. Every time you use it, the callus grows back thicker, okay? Christine said, my grandmama uses that in Mexico, laughing my ass off. Look, I don't know about Mexico, they might be legal in Mexico, but they ain't legal here, okay? Um, let's see, Lisette said, my grandma used to use it too, brings back memories. I mean, we all used to use it. But I'm, well, I, I don't, I, I, I know what you, you, you know, you, you're used to using. I'm here to tell you that you ain't supposed to be using it, okay? It is illegal, and if your nail salon is using this, you need to run away. Okay, I'm not telling you to call, stay bored on nobody, cuz you know, things, people get handled all on their own, let Jesus handle it. But, uh, don't let them use it on you, because if they cut someone with this, this is no different than a razor blade or a scalpel, and ain't none of these people using autoclaves, okay? No one is using autoclaves. I'm sorry, I don't have, not run into a salon yet that actually uses autoclaves, okay? Another thing that they are using that is illegal. Okay, these are called Credo blades, alright? Credo blades, and this is a literal razor blade, y'all, okay? This is a lo- a razor blade, I'm always scared to even take this thing apart, child, ooh, law. Because it is, it is a frickin' razor blade, but it is a razor blade, okay? And a lot of times, they just pick it up and put it on you and start cutting. How do you know they didn't cut somebody before they, um, did your nails? How do you know? How do you know? Annette said, my husband uses this, honey, the men, they just don't know right, they don't know no better, okay? Jesus is using me to handle it, Melody, I'm telling you. Um, can you get infected by it? You can get infected by a nail file, okay? Christine, you can get infected by anything that is not disinfected. You can get infected by a dirty fork, okay? So yes, you can absolutely get infected by it. All of these things need to be disinfected, this is so important, alright? Lisette said, I have seen my grandma use a razor blade on her feet, tore my nerves up, honey, you'd better, my mama does it too. But they got, that's why they got them thick feet. So, very good question, what should be used? Alright, so the answer to that is, in, if you want to ask me, is a metal foot file, okay? This is a metal fo- metal foot, foot file, and y'all, this is, you do not have to get this brand, you can get it, they have them on Amazon. I have a, uh, one that I keep in my bathroom, that is, uh, from Amazon, that works just great, okay? This is a metal foot file, alright? This is not a razor blade. If I were to, um, and this one in particular was made by Center for Beauty by Angel Feet, okay? Um, and these are usually on back order, there's a coarse side and there's a fine side. Now, what's so great about these is this is not a razor blade, okay? This, if you look at it very closely, and the closest I can get, each one of these little tiny knobs, it doesn't look like it's coarse here, okay, it doesn't look like it. But you rub this up against your feet, it's gonna take some of the, it's gonna take the callus off. These are not razor blades, these are little, what, what I want you to imagine, These are not razor blades, these are little, what, what I want you to imagine is a diamond. Or let's, let's think about like the pyramid, the pyramids, right? The pyramids, they come to a point. Well, imagine the point, the top of the point being flat topped, okay? So instead of being sharp and pointy, it's got a flat top on it. So it has, it, so this can be used in any motion, it doesn't have to be back and forward or side to side. It can be done circular motion, okay? Um, Chris said Foot Logix also makes a version of their file. Very, very, very true, Foot Logix does have a, uh, a, a foot file that is, um, but that is made similar to this. The question, the thing is, you want it to be disinfectable, okay? You want it to be disinfectable. And what does that have to be in order to be disinfectable? Well, it has to be one hundred percent either metal or some type of plastic in order to be disinfectable. Okay, but sterilizable, it has to be metal, and this is made out of stainless steel, okay? It's stainless steel, alright? And it can be cleaned and disinfected and also sterilized, okay? This cannot be sterilized because this has plastic on it. And this cannot go inside of a sterilizer, it would melt, alright? So that lets you know that these are not being sterilized, okay? And for those of you that have no idea what I'm talking about, when I'm talking about an autoclave. Uh, the, the difference between an autoclave and a UV sterilizer, don't worry. Go over to my infection control chapter, um, uh, video and there's all of that information is there, okay? So, just so you guys know, again, the state board, it's, it, it is illegal for nail technicians to cut. Okay, to cut or dramatically reduce calluses or on clients. Using a razor type callus shaver or any other similar tools. Okay, cutting falls under the category of a medical treatment and is not a cosmetic service. Don't do it, don't do it, do not do it. The technician may have to explain some of this to the client, alright, you need to explain to them. I am not allowed to use this, this is illegal, okay? And when you explain that to them, because they are, a lot of them are accustomed to this service. I know, I know for a fact that my students catch it all the time when they're working in these nail salons. A lot of these nail salon employers want you to use it. And you need to say no. Sometimes you just gotta tell Diddy no, tell Diddy no, okay? Just say no, alright, so, everybody understand that? And here's the biggest thing, cutting into clients' feet who are immunosuppressed. Or maybe they are, are sick or elderly or something like that, there, it's hard for them to heal their wounds, alright? So you just, you just can't do it, just don't do it. Even a tiny break in the skin on some of these clients can cause death, infection or amputation or even death, y'all. There's an, just Google death by pedicure, you will, you will thank me later, okay? Let's see, um, Annette says, yeah, I need to make an appointment, my hu- make my husband an appointment with a podiatrist. Listen, Annette, before you do that, get him one of these foot files. You can again, find these on Amazon, a no name brand, they work just as good. This is a very expensive file, this is gonna cost you about fifty to sixty dollars. Um, and that's with a, a nail technician discount, okay, with your license. But get him this to, have him stop cutting his feet with those, um, razors, okay? It's literally like Melody said, it's a lawsuit waiting to happen with your name on it, alright? That's a very good question, Eyes of a Queen, how often do you have to replace it? This will last, and this is from, directly from the manufacturer's mouth, up to fifteen hundred pedicures before you need to replace it. Now, here's the great thing about buying it from a reputable brand, no, this is stainless steel. Buying this from her, particularly, um, Center for Beauty. Um, CJ is her name, the owner of this company. That what's great about her, she's a small company and you can reach out to her, talk to her, text her, I got her number, she's really cool. Um, what the, what you, what you can do and with these files is, once they get to where they're dull. She, she has a program where you can send them back to her. And she will take them, ha- have, she collects them, I guess, has them melted back down, cuz she has a maid. Um, have these melted back down and she will send you another one for, not for free, but a discounted rate. Okay, so you won't have to pay full price for it. Um, so keep that in mind when you're buying, buying, the ones on Amazon, I couldn't tell you how long they last. Probably, you know, I don't know, I will see, I've had mine for a while, um, I, I rub the bottom of my feet every time I get out of the shower. Alright, cuz there's always gonna be a thin little bit of lettuce, little bit of skin on the bottom of your foot, um, that you wanna get off. But this company is reputable, right, it's an investment, yes, I have two of them that I bought years ago. I do not do pedicures like that, I promise you, they, they, they are still, they are still just as rough and, 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 and they work, okay? Very much so an investment. If you go to the shows, the, uh, if you're anybody gonna be at premiere. If you go to the shows, you, um, will see them there and they always have a discount. You have ten of them, I don't do pedicures like that, I think I have, uh, I have two of these. And then I have like four or five of the other no name brand ones for the, the schools, uh, for the school. Alright, we love a good investment, yes, definitely. What other options are there instead of that? As far as metal files, like I just said, go on, go on Amazon, get you, get you some of the cheaper ones. I got my license, I watched your training videos before I went in to take my test and I got an eighty-eight, yay! Congratulations, nails by my, my Karen. Very good, excellent. Alright, let's move, let's keep it moving. Let's see, what about the little file pedicure machine? Okay, so, um, we'll get to that in a second, using, um, E files with pedicure with an E file. I highly strongly suggest that. Mika Reagan, oh, okay, thank you for correcting me. Let's see, is there anything else instead of metal files, I hopped on right before that? Um, you can use the disposable, um, files that, but that's more money, that costs more money. You can, and you've, you've got, still gotta clean those and everything, so at the end of the day, um, the ones that peel off, the peelable files, those are great. Um, but they, again, that, that's more money, more money, more money, you gotta buy more, buy more, buy more, okay? Um, let's see. Hey, Caliopi, one of my students, my graduates in the house, good to see you. Certified nail technician here from Mississippi, hey, 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 I miss you too. Alright, so, um, let's see. Um, a pregnant client asked me for an illegal tool to remove her callus, uh, calluses. I explained to her why it was illegal to use, but she looked like she didn't care and was a bit mad at me, she'll get over it. She can go sit with somebody else, that's my, uh, that's my, I'm not going to use it. That's just, just stand, stand on, stand your ground, okay, don't do it. I, is she going to be, she gonna be real mad at you, she really, really likes you as a nail tech. And you lose your license and you can't do nails anymore, so, I mean, but you know, that's, that's extreme, but it is what it is, okay? Alright, so other materials that you're going to need. Toe separators, these are not to be used again on a client, you need to throw them away. Um, toe separators are not, are not multi-use, they are single use, okay? Um, they also, they do make toe separators that, um, you can sanitize and disinfect. I have some, they're really, really, really cute silicone ones, but I use them for myself, I don't buy them for clients. Um, but, uh, uh, use, uh, mo- most of the time, they are single use, okay? They're foam rubber that is going to, um, to absorb everything and porous, so we don't wanna reuse those. Pedicure slippers, you're gonna need those, those are also single use, okay? These need to be thrown away after every client, alright? Um, and then gloves, please use gloves while doing a pedicure, y'all. Um, you, you, you may not be able to identify when a client has a, um, a fungus or not. Um, but because it's so hard to, to, to diagnose these things, it's not your job to do that anyway. So just be safe, wear gloves, okay, wear gloves. I re- you, you really just, just do it when it comes to, uh, pedicuring. Okay, so we got us a super chat here, thank you Lisette, thank you. I really appreciate you, thank you so, so, so much, that is highly appreciated. Alright, um, Veronica says, I use paper towels and twirl, that is so, so, so advisable. Cheap, easy, take you a paper towel, let me see, where my paper towel at? Take you a paper towel, you want, you wanna get the ones that are like, um. Don't use these big huge ones, okay, cuz that's a waste, so you won't need that much. But get the ones that you can, you know, that kinda are going half like this. And I really like using a paper towel too, because you take a paper towel like this and you twirl it up and make you a little toe rope. Okay, and then go in between each one of those toes like this. Cheap, easy, and you got you a little palette for when you're cleaning up around the toes. If, if you're doing regular polish and gel or whatever you're doing on the toes, which y'all, I know, I don't like gel on the toes. But if you're especially a new nail tech, okay? But if you're using, then you can use this to, to use your cleanup brush and stuff like that. When you're, um, acetone and all that, to remove any residual off of the toenails. Very, very, very good, alright, so. Uh, let's see, someone said, can clients leave with those slippers, like, can we give them to them if they wanna take them out? Listen, I don't, these have about a twenty step, uh, mileage on them. So I used to, back when I'd be, you know, would go to the mall and get my feet done before I was, uh, you know, when I was young and dumb. I would go to the mall and I'd be like, oh, okay, I'm gonna get a pedicure, they give you these. And then you're walking through the mall with them, by the time you get to the, to the, uh, you know, the, the eatery area. These all fell apart, now you're walking barefoot in the mall, okay? Advise your clients, if they're going to be coming to get a pedicure, please wear some slippers, the food court, yeah. Click, wear some slippers, some shoes that can be, you know, that will work for walking, like. Slip, pet, get some flip, bring flip flops. Now, there are also, these are not the only type of slippers that you can buy in the nail supply. There are slippers, uh, you can buy like slippers that are like flip flops and they're very cheap, they're like a dollar, okay? A dollar, so if you wanna spend, but these are like ten for a dollar, okay? So it's all about what you wanna spend and how much money you're, you're gonna pass over to, along to your client, okay? Alright, um, I'll answer some of these other questions in a minute, okay? Um, let's see, I just graduated nail school in January twenty twenty-five, what trade shows are there that you recommend? Well, we're going to Premier Orlando on May thirty-first through June the third. That's where me and my, my crew will be, that is the show I recommend everyone go to. Everyone go to, okay? Go to that, and congratulations on graduating. Let's see, Lisette said, I can't wait to graduate, it's a milestone for me, new beginnings, and you will, congratulations to you. Um, alright, so, um, let's talk about some professional products out there. Cuz I have a few, um, different ones up here. Um, professional products are important for you guys to actually to use. I mean, you, I'm sure you can make your own scrubs and you can, you know, you can go and you can buy a big container. What, what's that, that Queen Helene cocoa butter oil lotion or whatever from the Dollar Tree? You gonna look real crazy doing that, alright? But there are several different types of products out here that you should, um, you should invest in, okay? Definitely invest in. Now, I like to use, um, cuz you've gotta have your foot soak, okay? And what is a foot soak, it's gonna be something that softens the skin on the feet. And, um, sometimes they come in these little blue tabs, things like that. So that, uh, dis- that are supposed to like sanitize the water and sanitize the feet, not disinfect. I know they're blue, like disinfected, but, um, it's not disinfected. Hey, Max Estrada, oh my God, Max Estrada is in my room, I cannot believe it. Hey, how you doing? Um, but anyway, back to the class. So foot soaks are gonna soften the skin and they're designed to cleanse, right? So, well, you wanna make sure that when you, cuz not everybody is, there's, some of their feet ain't clean, right? They come to you and they got dirty feet, you want, if that's the case, I mean, you especially want to make sure that you put those clients' feet in some type of cleanser. Let them soak for a few minutes before you put your hands on them, okay? Now, I personally am going to do an assessment of the client's feet before I put it in the water. And this is very important, why? Because your client's feet, when they first put, before they put them in the water, they're dry, okay? And you want to feel where the calluses are. You want to feel where the hard spots are, so that you know where to give the most attention. Once you put the client's feet in the water, now you're going to, the client's feet are gonna be moist, they're not gonna be hard anymore. And they're not going to, you're not gonna know where those points are that you need to pay the most attention to, okay? So keep that in mind, um, before, yes, they need to soak them, yes, they need to be cleansed. If you're, if you're doing a wet pedicure, cuz there is such thing as a dry pedicure, but I don't wanna confuse y'all with that. Um, but make sure you assess the feet before you put them in the water, so you, you know, you know what you're working with, alright? And the next thing you're gonna need is an exfoliating scrub, alright? The scrubs are going to remove the dry flaky skin. And it also helps reduce, helps reduce the callus. It's not gonna remove the callus, alright? And you should be wearing gloves when you are using these products, okay? Because the, the specially exfoliating cream, the exfol- ex- exfoliating cream. Exfoliating scrub, because it will cause you pain on your hands, okay? When you're rubbing the client's legs and things like that with this exfoliating scrub, alright? So, these excessive, uh, using, uh, you wanna avoid really, really, really hard abrasives. With your scrubs or abrasive scrubs, because they can leave tiny invisible scratches on your client's skin. That, you know, can literally be a portal, uh, of entry for, uh, microorganisms, okay? And when you're go- going to a dirty salon or a salon that doesn't disinfect their, their basins and their implements and their tubs and things of that nature. You can, this is, you can cause the client to, to get sick, okay? So, everything that we do, and the reasons why I try to teach you the right way to do things. Is because they're doing the, everything wrong, like, most of these places are doing things very, very wrong. And we want to make sure that we're not the reason why our clients get sick, okay? Make sure that you're doing things right. Again, I'm gonna teach you the right way. When you leave from me, when you grow up and be a big bird from a little bird, you go fly away from this here nest. Can do what you wanna do, go fly into, you know, if you, and it, for example, go fly into a windshield if you want to. By doing the stuff that I taught you not to do, okay? Alright, so, um, and I don't mean that literally, but I mean, you know what I'm saying, figuratively, alright? Uh, Quincy said, everybody make sure you hit the like button, yes, hit the like button, hey Quincy. Um, someone said, how long should the scrub be left on? Well, the scrub doesn't get left on, the scrub, you scrub. And then once you're finished with the scrub, you rinse it off, okay? So, you only leave it on as long as the scrub, uh, the scrubbing is, uh, being done, okay? It's not, it's not a soak or moisturizer. Alright, so let me look over here, Jennifer said, I wanted to share that I passed my boards today, yay! Congratulations, welcome to the world of being a licensed nail tech, it's gonna open a lot of doors for you. Pretty Brown Round said, hey, haven't seen this page in a while, I'm here, girl, I'm here, I'm here. Alright, let's move to the next slide, and if you are on the live right now, hop on over to our YouTube channel. Uh, Mary Negron School of Nails, and you can see our slides and you can see a whole lot more than just my face and my, you know. Unless you wanna stay and just, you know, take a gander. Alright, the next thing you're gonna need is mask, alright? And what, a mask and a lotion is two different things, okay? Mask is a concentrated treatment product, alright? Mostly composed of mineral clays and moisturizing agents, softeners and things like that. And it's used to cleanse and foliate, exfoliate, excuse me, tighten and tone, hydrate and nourish the skin. So those masks, like same thing that we do when we put it on our face and we just let it sit, right? And we, if y'all ever remember that whole trend when they were doing the clay mask. They would put that clay on their face until it dried up and then it cracked and it fell off a little. Well, you took it off and your face felt like a brand new baby's bottom or something, like it was just smooth, right? Um, same thing, that's what you do with a mask, but when we apply the mask, like I said earlier, get you some of this wrap. I know this is something that you would get from S- Sam's or something like that, or maybe a moving company or whatever. Take the mask, put it on, wrap it around the client like so, so that it traps in the heat and the moisture, okay? Take the mask, put it on, wrap it around the client like so, so that it traps in the heat and the moisture, okay? Like this, alright? And then, you know, take it off and then allow that mask to sit, alright? How long are you gonna keep it? Why did I just do this to myself now? I don't know, it's kinda tight, I don't know how I'm gonna get it off. Okay, alright, so, um, you're gonna allow it to sit, follow the instructions, alright? But, you know, you want to time these pedicures. You don't want them to last forever, alright? You charge them by the hour over here when it comes to these pedicures, alright? So it's usually left on the skin five to ten minutes, allow it to penetrate, okay? And then you rinse it off, alright? Um, this is a good time to put on those, those um, those foot mi- foot mitts, those electric heating foot mitts. Alright, now, foot lotions and creams, these are a little bit different than the mask. This is gonna be your conditioning and moisturizing the skin on the feet. It's gonna soften those calluses, right? And it also provides slip for your massage during the service, alright? So, um, you, there's so many different types of lotions out there. Y'all don't go, don't go to Bath and Body Works and get lotion, that type of lotion, just use professional products if you can. And that's why I really, really, really like these right here, because they come with everything you need, okay? Let me put it on the big screen here. Everything that you need comes in these packs. This is a jelly spa. I don't know why I brought the jo- the jelly spa. But this has everything in it that you need, including the jelly spa. So, if I take this out. So this would be considered one of those like super, super duper uh, souped up pedicures, right? So it's got the, the, each step, right? You've got your um, scrub. Sorry, first our melting mineral, which this is gonna be your um, your soak. Put this in there and it's the, and it's, literally it has the steps on here. Step one, jelly bath. And the reason they say here jelly bath, step one. Cause if you've ever done a jelly bath, you want that, you wanna go ahead and get that out of the way. You could even do this last if you wanted to, but this right here, it makes sense to do it first. You're gonna soak the feet in this, okay? Soak it in here. But I personally would, would do the mineral mask first, but. Um, step two, this is gonna be, uh, excuse me, the mineral mask, the melting minerals, this is gonna be your uh, soaking. Um, your soak, that your client soaked their feet in. Step three, your scrub. Everything's here. Step three, your scrub, so you put this on, on your, uh, on your hands, scrub the client's feet. And then your step four, which is your mask, alright? Do the mask and then step five is your massage lotion, okay? So, everything you, I like these packs. Now, I don't like to, when I'm using these packs, I don't like to just have the packs in front of me, shoot, open, throw it away. I like to be a little bit bougie. Get you some of these little cup things right here. And prepare everything ahead of time, like take your, you know, your cream, your lotion, squirt it in there so it looks cute. And you got, you know, and get different colors and you got your mask, put the squirted in there so it looks cute, you know? You could do, you do whatever you wanna do. I'm just, you know, when it comes to, to um, luxury and stuff like that, I try to, um. I try to make it, if I'm gonna be charging, cause if I'm gonna do a pedicure, it's gonna be expensive, okay? And um, if it's gonna be expensive, then you need to, you know, make it look nice, alright? So, callous softener, this is a whole different ballgame. I know y'all, look at these feet, woo. Those feet ain't seen a pedicure in a long time, and, and let me just be clear here, those are fissures on this client's feet. I have suffered from them before, it, those you literally have to heal from, those fissures, okay? Um, but that come, those fissures usually come from using the cheese grater. They usually come from using the cheese grater, y'all. It's gonna get worse and worse and worse. The more you cut the foot down. The thinner the skin gets, then you step on it and it splits. And then you try to leave it alone, cause it's bl- it's bleeding or it's painful, and then the skin grows back, but you've got this. Split in your foot, and then when the skin grows back, you cut it again and then splits again. It's just a cycle. So you gotta be very, very careful, okay? This, you gotta be very, very careful. The, those cheese graters cause this problem, okay? So, how do we remove callus? How do we remove callus? Let me pause and answer some of these questions here. Okay, let's see. Unicorn says, if I had teachers in high school like Miss Mary, I would have been in hon- been in honor roll. I thought about becoming a teacher, but see, I can't deal with these kids these days. I don't wanna be in the jail report. Y'all got a jail report in y'all city? We got a jail report, that's where they put all the people who've been arrested. They put a mugshot in the, and it's just a big. Yeah, I don't wanna be in that over your kid or over you. Um, cause these kids ain't got no sense. I'm working to reinstate my license. It's been a while, so I'm thankful for these videos. Oh, you're welcome. I hope they help. Alright, what moisturizer works for great, for, works for dry feet? Okay, so first let's talk about the callous softener. So, um, if you have never heard of LCN and Anez, you definitely want to, um. I know you said your husband, he needs to go see a podiatrist, okay? But, um, if you haven't heard of this particular product, you need to go um, to, and get you some, alright? Now, you gotta be licensed, you gotta be licensed to, to buy LCN products, but I'm sure. That you know somebody that can, you know, you can get anything anywhere, right? So, this is LCN, LCN, okay, Light Concept Nails. Let me put this on the screen. Um, so this particular product has what's called urea. Urea, okay? And if you don't know what urea is, do a little research on it. Urea is, this is what we would consider a medical pedicure, okay? So this is the entire line and I honestly, I'm missing one, because I keep the other one in my bathroom. Which is the Express Foot Spray. I put it on my feet every morning. This is how I keep my feet. You know, in that good condition, the kind of, the kind of feet that don't rip your sheets, you know what I'm saying? LCN, so urea is a compound or a protein that has healing. Uh, healing um, aspects to it. So, this has ten percent, so like I said, this is something that you would consider like a medical pedicure. If you have a client that has very, very thick calluses or very dry skin. Or even these fissures on their feet, this is literally going to heal the feet from the inside out, okay? Uh, yes, Chris. Chris said, LCN has a great system for reconstruction when you get into advanced pedicuring. This stu- this is, this one package of stuff right here that you see minus the one. Uh, Express Foot Spray that I keep in my bathroom. I keep that in my bathroom, cause like I said, I put it on my feet every day. But when I do my, when I do my pedicures, this is what I use. You see this fifteen percent urea in the product, fifteen percent urea, ten percent urea, twen- uh, ten percent urea. This stuff right here will literally like just melt away callus. This is particularly for the, uh, uh, callus line. It's perfect for diabetics, people who are diabetic. And the urea in the system improves, it improves the natural barrier or the function of the skin, right? And bringing, it brings a balance to the skin, allowing it to develop a nat- a more natural renewal rhythm, okay? And I'm literally reading this right off of the packaging, cause they, they give you, this comes with everything, it tells you everything about the product. I swear by this product, okay? Um, and the great thing about this product is, not only can you use it, like if. For instance, let's just say a basic pedicure, right? You do a basic pedicure, let, maybe you put it, cause this has a mask too. You charge forty-five, fifty dollars for a basic pedicure with a mask. With a pedicure like this, this is going to be directly, you're gonna use this on clients who need it, okay? And you're going to charge them for it, okay? This is a hundred dollar pedicure easily. Hundred dollar pedicure easily, because all of these products alone, I think for the bundle package that I got. I think I paid like a hundred and twenty dollars for the whole kit, and I got that at the um, at the Premier Orlando Trade Show. Where she trains you how to use it. And I, you can also get this from CJ's Beauty Supply, CJ's Center for Beauty. She sells LCN products, okay? So, um, if you have a client that has these issues that we just saw, like with the dry feet, fissures. This is how I healed my fissures, cause it will heal your feet from the inside out, okay? It will heal them, and I swear by their products. I swear by them. Um, this is another brand that I like, and this is um, this is a, a big sample pack that they gave me at the show. Uh, when I went to the show, but this is a um, brand that I like to use called um. Gwal, this is a German brand, okay? Like you can even see they write this stuff in German. But these are, these are sample packs, but their products are very much so considered uh, medical grade, okay? Alright, uh, I, I like their products as well, but these are some professional products that you will not be able to buy. In the regular nail supply. You will not see these products in the nail supply, like this right here, the Lipidro Cream. This is a, you see the Gwal Med? This is a medical product, okay? This is something that when you become an ANT or advanced nail tech or a lo- a foot care nail tech. Or something that requires more advanced training, you will be able to purchase these products, okay? It's G E H W O L, Gwal, alright? That's the, the name of the, the, the uh, brand, alright? And they, they, they gave me, when I told them I was a teacher, she was like, here, take all of this stuff. Like these ta- callous creams, this is their med line, okay? Medical line, they've got um, hydro lipid lotions for dry skin. You can, um, uh, again, all of these are deodorant foot cream, if you've got clients that have funky feet that tend to. They tend to have, you know, smells to their feet. You can retail these products to your client. Yeah, it's something like that, alright? Um, any updates on the e-file restocks? Yep, when Donald Trump and um, and, and Xi Jinping or whatever his name. When they come to an agreement on even tariffs, they gonna put my order in. I told them to wait, I'm not paying a hundred and forty-five percent tariffs. So, soon, hopefully, cause my guy is gonna get it together, alright? So, back to my slides here, cause I don't wanna keep you guys all night, but. This, when, again, this happens from using um, improperly using these, these. Razor blades and things like that. So, callous softener or callous remover, you guys, you gotta be careful with it, alright? You gotta be careful with it, and you need to read the instructions. A lot of you are not reading the instructions, okay? This is another product that I love called um, Sashay. This is, was developed by CJ. She had this one um, actually made. This is a um, a callous remover containing urea, okay? So when you apply this, again, yes, it can cause chemical burns. You can actually burn a hole in somebody's foot. You cannot, y'all can stop letting these people. Just put callous remover on your foot and walk away, okay? It, 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 it can really hurt you, alright? So when you apply this, literally you need to follow the instructions. With this one, it will tell you, only apply it to the affected area. Do not apply this all over the foot. And I see people take callous remover, just squirt it in their hands with no gloves on, rub it all over the foot, on top of the feet, between the toes. And that is going to, you can literally burn the client, okay? But it will tell you after, you only going to put it on the targeted area. Leave it on for ten seconds, y'all. This, this, I swear by it. You put it on for ten seconds. This is for regular callus, just regular on what you would do for a biweekly. Or monthly, excuse me, monthly pedicure. Now, and then you just ru- rinse it off and you can rub it with your finger, y'all. You can rub the skin off with your finger. That's like playing in perm, yes, absolutely. It absolutely is like using per- perm, and it will rub, it'll take the hair right out. Alright, so if you have a very thick callus, okay, for extreme calluses. It, she tells you to take a, and I've seen her do it, cause she trains you how to do it. You're going to take the cotton ba- take cotton, saturate this into the cotton with gloves on now. And you're going to lay it on top of the area that is calloused, okay? And then you let it sit for three to four minutes. How long? Three to four minutes, not ten minutes, not while your nail tech goes smokes some cigarettes or vapes or whatever she goes to do. No, three to four minutes. Time it. It's called sashay, okay? Sashay, I will show, you can see it on the screen on my YouTube much better, okay? And then with your stainless steel file that she sells, okay? CJ, CJ Center for Beauty, cause this is made, this is made by her. She had these, this made by a chemist, okay? Um, you're gonna take, when I tell you the skin rubs off. Literally, you just rub it off. Now, you guys need to be aware that there are things. That you have, you know, when it comes to pedicures, okay? Um, yeah, she sells it on her website. She sells it on her website. Go to Center, Center for Beauty. Um, i- i- if, i- if your client comes in with feet like this, okay? They didn't get these feet overnight. So pedicures need to be done regularly, okay? And in, in what we call series pedicures, okay? And I will get to what that is in a minute, alright? But I just wanted to show you guys some of my favorite professional products, so that you can, you know. Have these in your, in your arsenal, okay? Sashay, sashay, sashay. I don't know why she named it that, but it's a cute name. Sashay, S A apostrophe S H A, sashay. Sashay away. We're gonna sashay away to this next subject. Alright, so what are some of the things you need to do in order to establish a pedicure business, okay? Because there are people who strictly do pedicures. I have a couple of students that all they do is pedicures and they are doing wonderful. Excellent. All they do is medical grade pedicures, okay? Alright, so. First of all, you need to choose a product line, okay? Whether you're going to use a product line like this, that's in these boxes, get you a bunch of them. Or if you're going to purchase a product line, um, you know, uh, from the beauty supply store. Gotta find a product line. But some of my favorite, um, Chris mentioned earlier, Foot Logix. I love Foot Logix products. I have some of Foot Logix, I, well, I have a couple of Foot Logix products, but this is, I use this when I'm doing um, artificial toe prosthetics. Okay, this is a tincture cream, uh, spray that I, I sell to my clients that get uh, prosthetic toenails. Um, that's a whole nother class. Thank you so much, Renee. Thank you for the gifts, alright? But you knew, need to choose a pedicure product, just like y'all, we, we gotta start being professional, just like these hairstylists. You go into a, a hair salon and they will have Redken products, and they will retail Redken products. Or Paul Mitchell, if it's a Paul Mitchell salon, they sell Paul Mitchell products. You choose a pr- uh, product line, and if you start, you can start make, you should be making at least fifteen percent of your income should be coming from retailing products. Retail, okay? You send your clients home with products that they can use to make your job easier, okay? And Foot Logix is a great one, because they have an entire line of products that you can use on your clients while you're doing the pedicure. And then you turn around and send them home with a little bag with something, you know? It's the same thing, when I, every time I get waxed, them girls trying to sell me something to keep my hair from growing back or. To, you know, to keep my skin exfoliated and so I don't get ingrowns and things like that, and I do buy it every time. I don't need that stuff, but I buy it every time. In this case, your client needs it, cause you want them to keep coming back to you and keeping their feet healthy. While they're not getting pedicures, cause yeah, there's no such thing as pedicure season. But some people do slow down getting pedicures during certain times of the year, okay? And with these ser- professional products, you can create a service menu, alright? And these professional products will also offer you professional education on these products, okay? The, you're not gonna get a educational seminar on the no name brand or some, something that you created or made yourself. Or that you bought off of Amazon, okay? If you buy Foot Logix products, you go to their website, they will have free education for you on how to use these products, okay? I know Center for Beauty, she definitely um, provides this education at the shows and things of that nature. That's how I came about learning these things, okay? Alright, so, tailor your service me- uh, menu to your client's lifestyles, alright? You may have a client that, like I said, has smelly feet. There's, there's, there's a spray for that. You may have a client that has dry feet. There's a, there's a powder for that, or excuse me, a spray for that, and a moisturizer for that. There's a, there's a powder for that, or excuse me, a spray for that, and their moisturizer for that, there's all, again, you saw this. Packet of all these different samples, they all have a purpose, okay? And then, of course, you may want to have certain scents, certain essences, aromatherapies, different smells that you wanna offer to your client, okay? Now, um, how should we interact with our clients during our services, right? Um, if you're going to talk to your client, you know, it's one thing to, to laugh and kiki and gossip about, you know. The Diddy, the Diddy trial and all the kinds of stuff that's going on in the world, politics, whatever, I don't recommend you do. But if you're gonna talk about things, let, first, let's start with their foot, let's talk about their foot health, alright? Let's talk about some upgrades and things that they may be able to, to do, so that you can make a little bit more money. Also, product recommendations, let's talk about those things, get those out the way, and if your client wants to relax. And enjoy their service, don't talk to them at all, you know, um, offer them refreshments, okay? Offering refreshments is totally okay, um, I do not recommend that you offer um, adult beverages, okay? Actually, you can get a little hairy there, and, and it just depends on where you are, um, in, in what state you live in, if that's even legal, okay? So be, but be very, very careful, and then keep the per- the conversation professional, you know, I was joking about. You know, talking about the Diddy trial and all that, but try to keep the conversation professional, because there are other people. Nine times out of ten, sitting next to you, sitting in the chair or sitting in a chair close to you. And they don't wanna hear about your, you know, medical issues and your husband's problems and, and you know, things like that, some, uh, nobody wants to hear about that. Um, maybe your nail tech don't even wanna hear about it, but with that being said, keep your conversation professional, alright? And try not to get distracted during your client's pr- um, pedicure, try to, try to um, you know, focus on what you're doing. And encourage monthly pedicures, pedicures are not just summertime, they are not bi-monthly, they are not every three months. And they should be every month, no, uh, every three weeks to, to a month, okay? Um, try to, to encourage that, so that you can keep their feet, feet, you know, maintained. So then, you know, next time they come to you, they're, they don't have a hoof on the wa- a little, a little baby hoof on the bottom of their foot. Alright, so here's something that's very important, and a lot of you may not know this, okay? Advise your clients not to shave their legs up to twenty-four, excuse me, forty-eight hours before their appointment. I know, I know, they don't want you to feel their little prickly pear hairs and all of that stuff on their legs. And I get it, I don't want my nail tech to be, or my pedicures to feel that either, but oh, well. Because if you are shaving your legs before you come to get a pedicure. That is, you are opening yourself up to um, to micro traumas. And also um, microorganisms, and again, not everybody is clean. I see it all the time and I get really grossed out, like, I was at Sam's the other day, and you know, every time I go to Sam's, I get a hot dog. Cause I love their hot dogs, and the ladies working in the kitchen, like, they got on gloves, but they're, they've got on gloves. But then they're working with the food and then they don't take the gloves off to like, do the register. And then they go right back to, and I'm like, what is the point of the gl-? See, I come from a medical background, I don't know if a lot of y'all know this, but I was a medic for years on an ambulance, and I worked in. The local hospital in the emergency room for ten years, okay? We, if you walked into a room with gloves on. Or walked out of a room with gloves on, you would get written up, you might even get fired. Because it makes no sense to me how these people, you know, you put on gloves, who are you protecting? Your, your hands, your fingers? You're protecting your own fingers, like, it doesn't make any sense, so you walk into a room. We had, we had a, we had a um, what we call um, sanitize in, sanitize out campaign when I was working in the hospital. They had hand sanitizer, and we're talking about medical grade hand sanitizer, they would dry your hands, out my hands, stayed cracked and dry. But you had to sanitize before you went in the room, open the door with your shoulder, the door, you had to push it open, right? And then they had a sanitizing can of spray can, on the inside of the room and the outside of the room, so before you went in, you sanitized. Open the room, you went in, washed your hands, put on gloves, dealt with the patient. Then when you were done with the patient, you took off your gloves, you washed her hands, you sanitized on your way out of the room. It's just the way it's supposed to be done, it just makes no sense, so again, you wanna, the reason for not. Um, shaving your legs is because you, you, I've seen nail techs do it all the time, when I do my nail, nail tech review or nail salon reviews. They put on their gloves, and then they're picking up their cellphone, and they're doing this. Or they, they got gloves on and they look at their Apple Watch and they. Y- y'all, you gotta make it make sense. So i- i- it, it literally, Delilah, it drives me nuts, because I come from a background. Where, you know, I, I understand how sanitation actually works. But you guys, you know, and someone just said that you would ask them to change their gloves before you touch my food. Baby, listen, you taking a risk every time you go out to eat outside of your own home. For all you know, they pick, pick the biggest booger out of their nose five minutes before they, right after they. Before or after they changed their gloves, hell, if you ask them to, and then you ask people to do stuff and then they, they nasty and they go back there and spit on your food. Like, you just, you know, you take a risk every time you deal, so, and you are, and let's be real here. You are doing the same thing when you go to the nail salon, you are taking a risk. Every time you go outside of your home, this is why I stay in my house all the time, I, y'all rarely see me out, okay? Cause I don't trust people, okay, you are taking a ri- you don't know. If that person washed their hands before they did your major hot dog or before they did your nails. You don't know if that person is sick, you don't know if that person, uh, you know, changed their gloves, put new gloves on, to, to. You don't, they might have had them gloves on all day, I've seen it where they have them gloves on all day. And you people that go to the grocery store with gloves on, picking up the, and picking up the cucumbers and the, and the onions and stuff, y'all make me sick. You just don't know what people do, okay, so with that being said, don't add to your risk. Okay, don't add to your risk, one of uh, the salons I went to, you had your own box of files. Well, everybody shouldn't have, should have a box of clean files, and you should be throwing the files away after every client, okay? So, not to get off subject, cause I, we are, we have been on this live for an hour and fifty-seven minutes, I only have thirty more minutes per my. Timer in my brain here, okay, so I don't wanna be on here all night, I'll get on a tangent with you guys, okay? Let's see, let me look at some of these questions, let's see, someone said, I love Foot Logic, yes, Foot Logix is awesome, Yamella. Um, Yamilla, Ms. Perez, alright, how do I become a medical nail tech, I'm already a licensed cosmetologist? I offer that course and I do have the course scheduled for June. Uh, I'm not gonna say the date, because I'm still waiting on, it's the end of June, but I may push it back to July, just because. I'm waiting on the creator of the course to do some things for me on the website, but I am offering the. A and T, A and T course in the next thirty, sixty days, okay? Sixty days, alright, so, um, Bree said, I don't eat. At one Maud's Pizza location anymore because of the same reasons. Listen, you, I guarantee you, the reasons you don't eat there are the same reasons you shouldn't eat nowhere, cause people are, people don't. They, they, they don't think about these things, you know, they're like, oh, I got gloves on, but what do you have the gloves on for? The gloves are not really protecting you, you're acting like they're protecting you, the gloves are to protect the client, right? So, well, both of you, but at the end of the day, if you're touching dirty stuff and you've got gloves on and then touching me, you're not. You're not doing what you're supposed to do, okay, alright? Um, Christine said, even dealing with food, you get trained not to do that, I've worked in the food industry for so long, you need to watch food safety procedures. Before even working with delicate things like that, I agree, but again, people get trained on how to do stuff and they still don't do it. My students, they know better, I hope and pray that the ones that I teach know better, okay? Um, and they don't do that kinda stuff, but you know, you see it all the time. Phaedra says, so will I be licensed only in Georgia if I take your course, it's a certification course, it is not a license. So if you're licensed, then it will cover you in every state, okay, it's a certification, not a license. Alright, so, back to what I was saying about scheduling, make sure, ask your client, I mean, and this is something you should just ask them, okay? Ask them, have you shaved your legs in the last forty-eight hours, and if the client has, cause they probably have. You can still offer them a pedicure, just make it a waterless pedicure, okay? Waterless pedicure, which means you're not going to be using the water in the bowl, you're gonna use war- war- warm wet towels. Um, and the reason for the um, the whole, a whole, the whole reason we're scared to do pedicures on people who have shaved their legs is because of. What the water that's in those bowls and the bowls not being one hundred percent clean. We can't sterilize the bowls, y'all, okay, we can only disinfect them, and it's just one of those things, we just don't want to introduce. Uh, microorganisms into your client, okay? Now, um, when you are putting your services together. Remember that a basic pedicure, a basic pedicure should take thirty to forty-five minutes, alright? And it has, including the foot massage, I went to a nail salon not long ago, uh, well, it was long ago, Lord, let me not lie, cause I don't go to nail salons, y'all. I'm gonna start letting Shayla do my feet, cause she working at a salon that, and I trust my um, trust my students. But um, uh, I went to a salon, I thought it was the coolest idea ever, they had their menu. It looked like a Mexican food menu, Mexican restaurant menu, they had their menu, and it had all, everything that was included, and it said in the basic pedicure. Five, or, excuse me, three-minute massage, and what they did, I was like, three minutes, that's a very, very specific number. Well, the reason they said that is cause they brought out a timer, and they put the timer, they had little timers. And they set the timer for three minutes, and they did their massage, a minute and a half on one finger hand. Uh, one foot and a minute and a half on the other foot, so you knew exactly how long your massage was gonna be, and the massage went up. At like a minute at, for every level, so they had one, like your um, super duper deluxe pedicure had like a five-minute massage. Which I thought was so clever, and so you may want to think about that when you are um, putting together your services. Now, your spa pedicures, they're usually one hour to an hour and a half, alright, they're gonna be longer, and they include. A leg massage, okay, now, again, I am, when I said foot massage. Basic pedicure is supposed to be just a foot massage, per the state board, y'all go massage them people's leg. But for state board purposes, a spa pedicure includes the leg as well, okay? And other pampering treatments, again, this is state board, we're talking about state board here, what you do when you decide to. Um, create your service menu and do your, create your services, that's completely up to you, but when the state board asks you. Does a basic pedicure include a leg massage, you're going to say, no, okay? So that you pass your state board, everybody understand what I'm saying? So bet, nobody better not get on my live and say, well, I, what you mean it don't include a leg massage, I said for state board purposes, okay? Per the state board, when you take your test, it will say, spa pedicure includes a leg massage, true or false? Yes, it won't be true or false, it'll be multiple choice, but I'm just saying, y'all got me, y'all got me, you smell me, okay? Um, Yamilla said, my favorite pedicure, I love doing waterless, me too, I like doing dry pedicures on the feet. So that I can remove all of the callous, okay, and then doing a waterless pedicure is so much easier, no water needed. Um, no, it's just, you know, it's just, I just enjoy doing that so much better, okay? Alright, stay on schedule, make sure that you are keeping to your service times, alright? And your consultation is what's going to determine your service time, how long you spend on the client, alright? And always, always, always allot an extra ten minutes for disinfecting. You guys are booking your clients back to back to back, and you're taking an hour to do a pedicure, and then you say, oh, one o'clock, I got a pedicure, two o'clock, I got a pedicure. No, your pedicure is not an hour long, pedicure should be forty-five minutes with ten minutes to ten minutes, fifteen minutes for cleanup and. And disinfecting, okay? So keep that in mind, and I see it all the time, people do not disinfect, they spray it down with barbicide, they don't even wipe it down. Wash it out, the bowl out and walk away, this is why you people are ending up with funguses on your toes. Uh, 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 all types of uh, disorders and diseases on your feet. And funguses on the bottom of your feet and, and not know, and getting sick in general, no one will ever tell you that you got sick from your pedicure. But if you can catch a cold from eating off of a dirty spoon, why can't you catch a cold? From um, getting a pedicure and your, your, you shaved your legs and now you got an open wound on your leg and somebody sneezed on the pedicure bowl. Make it make sense, please, just saying, it's highly possible. Y'all be worried about going out to eat and be, being around people, cause they sneezing also, what about your pet manicurists and your pedicures? Just saying, think about it, um, Amber said, do you teach nail technician classes that will license us, yes, absolutely. I am Mary Negron School of Nails, I am a licensed Georgia State school. That um, can teach students and offer licenses, um, courses to get licensed, alright? Let's see, uh, elderly clients, alright? When you are working with elderly, just cause people are old, doesn't mean they can't get pedicures, they can still get pedicures, but they may not. They may need additional assistance, okay, a main, and a lot of times their feet will be in worse shape than someone who's younger, because. They cannot reach or see their feet, alright? Um, they can't clip their own toenails, because maybe they can't, sometimes they can't squeeze the nail clippers to trim their own toenails, they may not be able to see. Or to do it, um, and as a nail technician, you know, just be sure that you offer pedicure services to this population. When you're creating your service menus, now, that does not mean that you should be taking care of clients. Just, just because someone's elderly doesn't mean that they require a podiatrist, okay? If the client requires a peta- a podiatrist, then you need to refer them to a podiatrist, alright? I'm not saying that you need to be working on people that have, you know, thick toenails and they, and they need to be debrided and all of these medical terms. That y'all should not know anything about, okay? Not unless you're an A and T, an advanced nail tech or a medical nail technician, okay? But you will get elderly people and they have special needs, okay? Now, um, some salons, you know, sell pedicures as single packages, one at a time. But you can also offer packages for pedicures, like six services for X amount of dollars, that's a really good idea. Highly recommend it, cause I know me personally, I buy packages all the time for all kinds of things, and then I never use it, but you got paid, okay? So consider that, um, packages, most of the time, they order, have some type of discount, for example. Maybe the client receives a free pedicure when they purchase twelve. Um, discount is on, on that one pedicure, or each service is less than what they. Um, would pay if they only purchased one, et cetera, et cetera, okay? And market those services during holidays, special events, such as Christmas or Valentine's Day, Mother's Day, prom, weddings, birthdays, stuff like that. Okay, um, cha- here's a little tip for you guys, make sure that you are charging extra for add-ons to services, okay? Such as paraffin wax and nail art, stop including all this stuff in one price, and services have a dollar value. Especially when you consider time, okay? And how much uh, uh, expense in product, okay? If you're doing an LCN pedicure, someone, uh, I think it was Yamilla said that she went and looked this up, it was pricey, yeah. So that means that your callous treatment is not going to be an additional five dollars, no ma'am. No, you're going to charge accordingly, okay? Always be upfront about your pricing, okay? Don't tell someone, oh, and some, I'm around, sit, no, 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 let, make it clear, okay? So that way, if the client ins- decides to indulge in their pedicure that day, which I do that often, I'm like, you know what? Let me try this hundred-dollar pedicure, see what they talking about, you know, and, and it's not even really. Um, about the actual pedicure, but it's like, let me see what is this hundred dollars all about, spending all this money on this pedicure, right? So, um, keep that in mind, now, what are the benefits of massage, okay? What are the benefits of massage? Well, first of all, it's relaxing, it's gonna stimulate blood flow. And, you know, y- y- as far as um, emphasis on the areas that clients enjoy. Some clients really enjoy a foot massage, some of them can't hardly stand it, okay? Some of them are like, oh, I'm ticklish, which, uh, those ones get on my nerves, I'm like, why you want a pedicure and you know you can't stand for nobody to touch your? Some of them are like, oh, I'm ticklish, which are those ones get on my nerves. I'm like, why you want a pedicure and you know you can't stand for nobody to touch your feet, okay? But there are, be aware of those clients, cause they will kick you in the face and that is not any fun, all right? So, um, just but keep this in mind, the most enjoy- enjoyable massage is gonna be one that's rhyth- rhythmic. And slow, slide of the fingers, using the palms, connecting to the client as much as possible, being quiet, don't talk so damn much. Maintaining touch and connection with the client throughout that massage, okay? Sliding your hands very, very gently, don't do any abrupt movements, you know? Um, and then keeping them uh, moving from one location to the next with a smooth transition, okay? And when you're holding the foot, make sure that you're grasping the foot um, between the thumb and your fingers. Right in that middle tarsal area, if you don't know where the that is, then you should be. In the anatomy and physiology section of my course and and checking out what those words mean. But that's going to be in between, okay? The mid tarsal area is going to be right in around the ball of the foot, of the where the um, pad of the foot is, okay? And the thumb is on the bottom of the foot while the further fingers are wrapped around the top side of the foot, okay? And basically, that's gonna accomplish a couple of things, that's gonna lock the foot into place. Giving the nail technician a good control over the client's foot, okay? And then that gentle but firm grip is calming to the client, um, it gives them calming effects and it overcomes that apprehension. For the in those areas of for clients that are ticklish or dislike having their feet touched. Because you're pressing on that area in the middle of their foot and it kinda takes away their um, them thinking about it so much, okay? So avoid holding that foot really, really loose, okay? Because it'll drop it and then that tick, you'll get that, you can also cause a ticklish sensation, he would nice firm grip, okay? Most clients can tolerate that, all right? And then that's when you pu- then you perform your your um, your pedicure procedure that way. Now, um, clients who uh, are sensitive or have special health concerns. So this is gonna get into the A and T side of things, I just wanna touch on it a little bit. I do offer that course, um, I do it about twice a year. Um, it is a s- a six hundred dollar course, okay? I do make pay, uh, allow you to make payments. Um, it's in person instead of online. Um, and uh, you'll walk away with a certification that will allow you to work on clients. Who are under the care of a podiatrist or a physician, okay? And these clients are the type of clients that are sensitive. Meaning they maybe have special health considerations like diabetes, they have um, high blood pressure or low blood pressure. And A and T pedicure procedure is unlike any other pedicure. There is no deep massage or massage techniques. There is no, um, there is no water involved, you're going to be using warm wet towels. Um, doing uh, what we call waterless pedicures, these clients who have these special considerations. Cannot have their feet dangling in a pot uh, of hot water, okay? So there are certain things that we do in the A and T, on the A and T side of things. That um, are uh, again, uh, very specialized training and I do offer that training. And I am gonna be offering it in the next sixty days. I just have, I'm waiting on Ms. Janet McCormick, who created the course. To do a couple of things for me and before I drop the date, I wanna make sure I have those things done, okay? So, who are these clients that have these special health considerations? They are going to be your clients that have limited mobility. If you have ever seen a uh, nail technician who is an A and T or an A uh, M and T, if you've seen their setup. They usually have the type of those types of chairs where the client literally lays down, okay? They lay down while they're getting their pedicure, they're laying down their feet, it's almost like a um, like a dentist's chair, okay? So clients that have limited mobility, all right? Um, uh, clients that are in wheelchairs, um, clients that maybe they're in nursing homes, things of that nature. Those are gonna be the type of clients, also clients who experience involuntary movements, maybe they have um, Parkinson's. Um, they shake, all right? Um, and also clients with altered vision, um, th- those clients aren't able to do their own services, okay? Or they may not even be able to go to a regular nail tech, all right? That is not experienced with these types of clients, okay? Um, so, um, clients with altered vision. Um, you wanna make sure that you're clear with them, what color they're getting, describing their color, giving them examples. They may not even be able to choose their colors and things of that nature, all right? So, um, some other health conditions that would warrant you having uh, taking the A and T course. And wanting to be an A and T and working with these types of clients, clients with painful joints. And there's many reasons why a client would have painful joints, but the most well-known would be arthritis, right? So if a client mentions that they have painful joints during their client consultation, you'll want to handle them very gently. You're never gonna want to apply um, direct pressure on the joints. And you don't wanna manipulate their joints um, during their massage portion. So always check with them throughout the service to make sure that they're not in any pain, all right? And a lot of these clients come with caregivers. So a client may come with their caregiver and you wanna always make sure you can accommodate them. Make room for the caregiver and accept any assistance that they wanna get. If they, listen, if they wanna pick up the client and put him in the pedicure chair, let them do it, you don't do it. You are, I don't care if you are a CNA or was a CNA or used to be a CNA, that is not your professional capacity at this very moment, okay? So let them do what they can, all right? Now, clients with lowered immunity, who are gonna be your clients with lowered immunity? Can anyone tell me? Someone said, let's see, Ms. Perez says, should a wellness nail tech pedic- what should a wellness pedicure be more expensive than a pedicure for a health? Healthy person, for example, elderly person with diabetes. Absolutely, if you are offering wellness pedicures, absolutely. And in this case, if you are offering wellness pedicures and you are an A and T or a wellness nail tech or a medical nail tech. You should be charging insurance company, you can charge insurance companies for these pedicures, they will pay for routine foot care, okay? They will pay for it. So what type of clients are the type of clients with lowered immunity? Does anybody know? Anybody know? Okay, nobody knows, so I'm gonna tell you. A client with lowered immunity would be, yep, someone with HIV, very good, someone with lupus. Someone with cancer, yay, y'all got the answer, yay. We got, let's see, we got uh, twenty seven people on YouTube, which is awesome and they're talking to me over here and we got thirty one people in the chat. So yes, those clients with lowered immunity, doesn't mean you cannot, just because they have lowered immunity. Does not mean that you cannot work on them, you just need to make sure that you are following very, very strict infection control procedures and practices, okay? A client with lowered immunity should feel safe in your facility or your your um, establishment, just like anybody else. At the end of the day, these clients ain't gonna tell you they got HIV, they're not gonna tell you they got AIDS, you need to assume that all of them do, okay? Sarcoidosis is another one, yep, sarcoidosis is is definitely one, okay? Any autoimmune disorder, okay? Now, when you are working with clients who have special needs or if you're working with professional products. You may want to um, pick up this uh, particular uh, product, which is called toe floss. I don't have any here with me, I don't, I usually keep it at the school. But toe floss is those um, little sticks of 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 um, of cotton. They're like little, they look like little sticks, but they 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 um, are bendable. Those are not for, they're not, shouldn't be used as toe separators, they're too expensive. Wha- what we do with them as A and Ts is we take um, alcohol. And we go, because these cli- think about, think about clients with diabetes or patients with diabetes. They generally, um, they're gonna have a limited amount of feeling in their feet sometimes. Sometimes they can't feel their feet at all, okay? Um, um, if if that's the case, if you ask them, do you have any wounds or anything on your feet, they're like, no, I don't know. And then you go in between their toes with some alcohol and then they jump. You know that they've got some type of wound in on their feet, okay? Um, so with that being said, you'll want to look between the toes, make sure you're flossing between those toes. Soak your nails, soak those nails with softening products that contain urea, which is healing, we talked about that earlier, all right? When you're working with clients who are diabetic or maybe they have these special considerations, do not use anything sharp. Do not nip cuticles, okay? Do not use harsh abrasives and use special cli- care when clipping the toenails. If you can, don't clip them at all, file them shorter. Okay, so that you don't cut these clients, it would be the worst thing in the world to cut a diabetic's foot, okay? So with that being said, don't risk it, there are other ways to trim down or to to make things shorter. Without using very, very sharp implements, okay? Um, Harley Quintana said, is there a virtual option for the A and T? Yes, there is a virtual option. Um, email me, inbox me, DM me, whatever, however you want to, I will get with you on that option, okay? Um, now, paraffin and massage, again, that's something that we don't want to, we wanna stay away from. Uh, paraffin wax uh, that's too hot on clients who have special needs. They sometimes, again, can't feel the heat, they don't know that it's too hot and then you end up burning them, okay? So you wanna let that wax cool a lot longer before applying it. And then the massage is always going, first of all, especially with older people, you wanna ask permission for doing a massage, a lot of them, they. They may not even want you to touch them like that, okay? And then uh, uh, always ask if there's any concerns about receiving the massage and use gentle pressure as needed, okay? Don't bend or flex the knees, the ankles, be gentle, smooth motions, you do not wanna cause these people any any more pain than they're already in. Now, let's talk about how we disinfect a pedicure station, okay? Same way we disinfect anything else, but be careful, you guys, in some states, you must have pedicure cleaning logs. And if you don't know what a pedicure cleaning log is, um, it's basically just, I I'm sure you've probably seen when you go to. I know every time I go to um, uh, Twin Peaks, they got on the door of the bathroom, uh, cleaned by the date, the time, right? Same thing, you're supposed to, in some states, it is a requirement, for instance, Florida requires it. It is a requirement to have a disinfecting log. I say have one every state, but you know, if it's not required, it's not required. How do I know that this pedicure station was cleaned by who and when? If you're in the state of Florida, ask the next time you go into the pedic- into get a pedicure, see if they got one, bet you they don't, bet you a million bucks they don't. Unless you go to City Escape Spa, I know they got one, okay? All right, so, um, again, this will depend on, depend on your, depend on your state. Um, your disinfecting regulations, you guys, this is gonna also um, be uh, be. You're gonna be using a hospital grade EPA registered disinfectant like barbicide, okay? Keeping records of these disinfecting procedures is is important, again, some states require it, some states don't, but check your state regulations. I'm in Georgia, they don't require it, but we do it anyway, okay? So, um, when you're disinfecting these pedicure bowls, okay? It's the same procedure as disinfecting anything else. You gotta clean it with soap and water, okay? Then you have to rinse it off, then you're spraying it down with barbicide. And we mean enough barbicide for it to stay wet for ten minutes, that's a lot of barbicide, these people are not doing this, okay? It's not being done. And then after it sets for ten minutes and we rinse it off, dry it and it's ready for the next client, okay? So, um, and that's only if you're using a pipeless chair, okay? If you don't know what the difference between a pipeless chair and a chair with pipes, do some research on that, okay? Now, in review, you all should have a very good understanding of of, you know, the implements, the materials. The products that you need to perform a pedicure. You also should understand how we establish pedicure business and maintain one, all right? And the main benefits of massage, you guys have learned also, the um, sensitivity. Uh, the the importance of clients that have sensitivities and special health considerations. And who should be getting pedicures by you and who should not and where they should be going and where they shouldn't be going, all right? And then our disinfecting practices, so hopefully you have um, learned a little bit tonight. And if you have not, then I don't know what you was doing over here hanging out with us. But if you have any questions, feel free to um, inbox me, DM me, Facebook, Instagram, TikTok, all of those places. Uh, preferably email Mary at Mary Negron School of Nails, all right? That's the best way to get to me, um, and I can help answer your questions if you are interested in. Um, in in enrolling in our school, we are enrolling, our next class is starting on June the fifth, okay? That is gonna be our, let me see, that's our orientation? Yeah, June the fifth is our orientation and then if you're on Friday class or Saturday class. It will be um, the sixth or the seventh, whatever, whichever day you start in person, okay? So, thank you guys so much for watching, I appreciate it. And if you don't have any questions, um, I'm gonna go ahead and get out of here and go get me something to eat, I'm starving. Bye y'all, y'all have a great night, see you in class tomorrow, pedicures, 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 bye y'all.